Okay, so quick question for you guys. Did you guys hear the news about the mountain lion that was in my neighborhood last night? Did you hear that, Jason?
I did hear that, and that's why I said, you know what, maybe it's a good thing we are not going to church.
I know. They, they shot it. So like, we heard a bunch of gunshots at our house last night. Well, it was at 4:30 this morning. And it freaked me out. And then I see that news article, and everybody in my neighborhood said it, you know, they killed it right back behind our house, like in the back part of the church. It's crazy. Somebody from my neighborhood saw it at three in the morning and called the cops.
I wonder how many more are lurking around, Amy.
I know. Well, my little boy, he, he goes out and it makes, he has big adventures all the time out in those fields right back behind our house. And kind of freaks you out that there's been a mountain lion back there.
Did they say how big it was?
No.
Yeah, I saw the story, but I didn't see that they said anything in there about how big or anything like that, but that's crazy.
Yeah, they said it was a male. That's all I know.
No fear of humans.
What'd you say?
Said it was an adult male with no fear of humans.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it said. Kind of scary.
You don't have someone trying to start a zoo in your neighborhood, do you?
Well, we've had moose run through our neighborhood multiple times that they've had to come and catch. And we've had lots of deer and, and stuff come through here, but this is the first I've heard of a mountain lion. Greg looks like he's the only one not on. Is that looking like that's the case?
Good evening, guys. Michael Graham.
Oh, thanks, Michael. Yeah, I didn't know who the phone number was, but that's Mike. So it looks like Greg is the only one we're missing.
Scott, do you know Jared Allen and Brian Bingham? They're here for the Alturis.
Yes, and Michelle Ball is, I saw her join this as well.
So Scott, when we do the pledge of allegiance, are we gonna throw that up on the screen, or do you want us to?
I, I did not include that in my slides. Amy, I could probably, if you have just a minute.
What do you know, Mary attached one in our.
I have one I can put up.
I did, I did attach one. In board book.
Yeah, I saw that you did. I just don't know how to access that. Well, I guess unless I.
Hang on.
Also, as of right this moment, I do not have any public input emails.
Oh, okay. I'll probably just ask you, Mary, right before. If we don't, if we don't have any, do I need to read that whole public input thing?
No, other than.
Oops. Uh oh.
Oops.
Where did you go?
So Mary, when we get to. Let me see here. After the consent calendar.
Yeah, then it's the.
Rather than, rather than going in straight to the rules and protocol or whatever, or reading the. The thing on public input. Can I just ask if we have any, and then if we don't, I'll skip it?
Well, we don't have public input, Amy, because we haven't invited anybody to the meeting to give public input. So they would have to complete that form or send an email to Mary ahead of time for us to, for them to be able to participate in the meeting.
Yeah.
Amy? Is this what you're, oh. Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, I'll take care of that. Paul, two seconds.
I don't see Paul on mine, but I hear his voice. Oh, hi, Greg.
Hello.
Oh, there you are, Paul.
Okay, so Paul, you should be able, Paul, you can trigger your screen now.
So what you're looking for?
Do you guys want me? To just go ahead and start from that screen? You just want to leave that on?
I think that would be fine, Amy.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we're gonna go ahead and have the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
The republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul, for providing that. And we're gonna go ahead and have Chad Dance offer our opening prayer.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered this evening as a school board and representing the students and the patrons in Bonneville School District 93. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve, thankful for the guidance and direction that thou hast given to us now and in the past, and pray for thy continued help and support in the future. We pray for our administration as we go through this COVID-19 issue that they might be blessed to make right choices, good decisions, and be protective of our students and our community. Help us, Father, in the decisions that we make that they might be right and in the best interests of our students and, and our patrons. We pray for thy blessings and and ask thee to continue to be with us and guide and direct us. We are grateful for our health and our strength, and pray that thou will continue to bless us and help us to be vigilant and cautious as we move forward to try to open our economy and open our schools and, and get back to normal eventually. And pray for these things and do it humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right. So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order, and we're gonna do a roll call. Chad Dance?
Here.
Greg Calder?
Here.
Paul Jenkins?
Here.
Scott Lynch?
Here.
And I, Amy Landers, I'm here. Well, we would like to welcome our delegates and visitors to our meeting today. We're excited to have the Alturis Charter School with us tonight, so thank you for joining us. So we just want to inform our patrons that access to public input can be found on the district's home webpage, www.d93schools.org, under School Board, the School Board tab. Patrons can submit written comments or speak directly to the board through a Zoom meeting link provided on the webpage. Due to their sensitive nature, complaints about personnel or an individual student must be submitted in accordance to Board Policy 4112 Uniform Grievance. Grievance forms 4112F1 are found on the district's homepage under the School Board tab, Board Policies. All right. Pursuant to Idaho Code 742044A, we amend the agenda for this meeting as follows: to add early graduation requests to the consent calendar and to add negotiation team appointments to the action items. These requests were received yesterday and are time-sensitive. We would need a motion to approve the agenda for the reasons stated.
amend the agenda for reasons stated.
Yep, that's what I said. Did it not come out that way?
Nope.
Okay. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Calder.
I will second it.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we would need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move.
The move by Mr. Calder?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So is there any board member looking over the consent calendar that would like to remove any items and include it on the regular agenda? If so, we would need a motion to be made. Hearing none. We would need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Dance. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Who said that first? Was it Greg?
I think it's Greg.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Calder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mary, I'm assuming no public input.
Um, let me look at my email. Um, I do not have any in my email.
Okay. Then we'll move forward with our, the rest of our meeting. So we're gonna go ahead and invite Jared Allen from Alturis Academy, the Charter Academy, to present their petition to our board.
Thank you, Chairwoman Landers. Uh, in visiting briefly by email with Mr. Wilson Hume yesterday, it's my understanding at the outset that, and I, and I informed him, we have already advanced our petition to the Public Charter School Commission with the expectation that none of the local districts would be interested in actually uh, being a chartering entity. But we did want to make ourselves available to keep you aware of what we're doing and to see if you have any questions that we might be able to answer. Now, let me start with real quick introductions. I'm Jared Allen. I'm a local. I grew up here in Idaho Falls and received my education through the public schools in District 91. Also with me tonight is Brian Bingham. He is the principal at our operating charter school, Alturis International Academy. And it's anticipated that he'll be the principal at Alturis Preparatory Academy. He received his master's in education and administration from ISU. And prior to becoming the principal at Alturis International, he taught Spanish at Hillcrest High School. Also here is Michelle Ball. She is the executive director of Alturis International. She is, I would say, the inspiration behind the formation of the school. She has a 30-plus-year teaching career here in Idaho Falls with 22 years in a multi-age classroom, implementing a teaching philosophy that was focused on providing small group instruction at academic instructional levels so that kids who are struggling can be taught at their level, kids who are accelerated can be taught at their level, uh, with the end goal of making sure that each child maximizes their educational opportunities. Alturis International, the school that we have operating out of the old O.E. Bell Building, was born out of a desire to try to take that classroom philosophy and scale it up to an entire school operation. Uh, it's an existing K through eight charter school. Uh, it's been in operation for a few years now here in Idaho Falls. In the process of preparing the charter for Alturis International, we discovered um, that the philosophy of the International Baccalaureate Organization aligned very well with Mrs. Ball's educational philosophy and the charter, and the philosophy that the charter was seeking to establish. Uh, if you're not familiar with International Baccalaureate or IB, its mission is to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. The organization works with schools, governments, and international organizations to develop challenging programs of international education and rigorous assessment. The program, the programs encourage students across the world to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners who understand that other people and their differences can also be right, or excuse me, other people with their differences. IB emphasizes academic rigor across four distinct programs. The primary year, Primary Years Program, or PYP, focuses on the K through five age group. The Middle Years Program, or MYP, focuses on the middle, middle school age group. And then there are two distinct high school programs, uh, or high school aged student programs, the Diploma Program and the Career Related Program. The PYP curriculum is based around six transdisciplinary themes: who we are, where we are in place and time, how we express ourselves, how the world works, how we organize ourselves, and sharing the planet. The MYP emphasizes coursework to meet the needs of 11- to 16-year-old students in six areas: global, intellectual, personal, physical, creative, and social. At the high school level, the International Baccalaureate Program offers a Diploma Program, which I would characterize as being analogous to a traditional high school diploma. And then a career-related program, which emphasizes career readiness and provides students with an opportunity to uh, focus on career-specific learning in addition to a traditional education model. Um, Alturis International received its IB World School accreditation for the PYP program last year, so we are the first uh, IB World School in Southeast Idaho. And we recent, recently completed the accreditation evaluations and interviews related to accreditation of the, the MYP, or the Middle Years Program, and expect to receive the same designation for that program relatively soon. We've seen considerable success in the community, and the objective behind establishing the Preparatory Academy is to make the entirety of the IB system available to our, our students, the Alturis International students. The school's been fully enrolled since, enrolled since its inception. Uh, currently has 562 seats for gates, grades K through eight. Our attrition levels are extremely low. Uh, we have a consistent and lengthy waiting list. In the most recent lottery, excluding kindergarten, which of course is empty for next year, we had 432 applicants for 15 available seats for grades one through eight. Um, the establishment of a high school, which is, is the purpose of our current charter application, we knew was a possibility from the outset of the original charter, but it wasn't a foregone conclusion. We wanted to focus first on making sure we could scale up the philosophy to a, a full school operation and have all teachers buy into the, to the teaching philosophy. The decision now to move forward with the expansion and creation of a high school has been largely driven by internal demand. As we considered the possibility, we surveyed the families of Alturis International. And the response was overwhelmingly in favor of expanding operations to include a high school so that those students could continue with the IB program. Excuse me. Uh, I think the numbers were somewhere in the 95% range, if I recall. Rather than amend our existing charter, our current plan is to establish a new charter for gate, grade six through 12. That would be our high school, middle, middle school and high school. And then we would amend the existing charter to serve grades K through five. And the purpose of this revision is to enable to, enable a slight expansion of grade enrollment to meet some of the waitlist demands without outpacing the capacity of our current facility. So if we expand slightly to meet some of those waitlist demands, we can, we can stay in the O.E. Bell Building with the K through five operations, and then the new facility will be acquired for the operation of the six through 12 operations known as Alturis Preparatory Academy. We have not settled on a specific. We have not settled on a specific location for that facility at this point in time. We're working closely with an organization called Building Hope. They're a Washington DC-based nonprofit dedicated to the development of facilities for charter schools. They were our partner in the development and, and remodeling of the O E Bell Facility. The goal is to have the facility ready by the, uh, and, and operational by fall of twenty twenty-one, so next, uh, a year from next school year. And should everything progress, uh, progress according to plan, Mr. Bingham will transition, as I indicated, to be its principal. The, um, the needs of the existing school will be met by, uh, the transition of one of our existing teachers into the administrative role as the principal. And it's anticipated, our expectation is that the, the vast majority of seats for our uh, six through twelve school will be filled by the students of our existing school, so we see very little, uh, impact on, anticipate very little impact on the local school districts beyond what has already been realized by the existence of our, our existing K through eight charter school. Um, that's all I have in terms of information to present. We're certainly happy to address any questions if there are any.
Mr. Allen, thank you so much for presenting for us. We know you're not in our boundaries for our school district, um, but it's always nice to hear what is going on locally and what the charters are doing. Um, we have several neighbors of mine that are over there already going to school and they love it, and it's just nice to know, I guess, what's being offered over there. So we appreciate you coming. Does the board have any uh, further questions or comments? Or anybody else from the school district, any of the admin? I'm not hearing any. Chad, did you have any?
Well, I just, not specifically, I appreciate that report and what they're doing and what they're accomplishing. But not quite, not understanding why they're presenting to our school district.
Well, I actually, I thought it would be good for us just to know what's out there in the community. As a school board, you know, we're aware of the other districts around us, but it's always good, I think, just to be aware of our charter schools, and so we invited them to come just to kind of hear what it is that they're doing. And, and I do have several neighbors over there, so I know that there's a lot of kids in our district over there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm aware of them, but, uh, uh, this was a good report. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity and, and just to kind of address that question, the, uh, the current version of the statute requires that we provide this opportunity to all districts that would be within our primary attendance area. So we sent that, uh, information and made this opportunity available to District ninety-three and Districts ninety-one and District sixty. You are the only district that showed an interest in, in keeping abreast of what's going on, uh, in the local community outside of your own operation, so we appreciate you giving us the opportunity and we're pleased to know that you care enough to, to have us here.
Michelle, you've, you've got a pretty good reputation. I know all the parents. They just love you, so you guys have done a great job with that school and we just appreciate you guys coming and sharing with us what you do. I think it's just good for us to know that that is going to be available and when it's opening and how many students you guys have over there, so those were facts I was unaware of, so. And it's good to know that you guys have so many people, um, applying in your lottery to get in. That's pretty awesome.
Thank you for your kind words. It's been a great journey, quite the adventure.
Well, we appreciate you guys. Thank you for everything you're doing for, for all of the kids in Idaho Falls and all the surrounding areas. Thank you for taking the time out to come. We appreciate it. Did you guys have anything further, or did you guys want to have any, do you have any questions for us?
No, we just want to thank you for inviting us and we're, we just want to be part of the educational community of Idaho Falls, and so that was, we really appreciate you're in, you inviting us to your board meeting to present what we're doing.
Well, we appreciate you guys. Thank you so much for sharing that information with us and best of luck to you, and I, I'd be interested to know when you guys do find a facility where you're gonna end up. I'm sure my neighbors will tell me.
Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
You, you guys are more than welcome to stay in and listen to our meeting. But you don't have to.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see ya.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move forward, um, with our construction report from John Pym.
Okay, uh, things are coming along, I think, very well out at, uh, the Black Canyon Middle School. If we just kind of work our way through the building, uh, the, the north end of the building is what we, uh, started on first. Uh, and those, uh, I've been calling them learning pods, but I heard a term the other day that I really liked that I'm gonna start to use, learning neighborhoods. Those learning neighborhoods are really coming along great. Uh, they're installing cabinets. They've been painted, the ceiling, uh, grids are in. Uh, all the HVAC, uh, all those kind of things are just, all we're looking for now is finishes in, in the, in that most northern stacked learning neighborhoods there. And then as you work back the other direction, uh, we're, we're anywhere from close to that to where we're just finishing the painting. Uh, so there's a total of six of those learning neighbor, neighborhoods in the school. Um, and, and there, the, uh, what we've come along the very farthest is, is on those classroom areas. Uh, they're also in the, uh, uh, the foods, the foods lab and sewing area, they're putting in a lot of the rough plumbing and electrical, the stations where the, you know, the stoves and the sinks will be for the students as they learn, uh, cooking skills. Uh, in the choir and the band rooms, the, uh, the band room is sheet rocked and taped. The choir room is just, uh, framed in and they're, uh, insulating and, and getting ready to, to sheet rock in there. Um, as we move on further through the, uh, on the other end, they just finished pouring the second deck um, and installing the big, uh, uh, VAV which heats and cools the building unit and then put the lid over that. Um, they have the gymnasium now pretty much up to the square, all the masonry. Um, and, uh, the, the only parts of the exterior of the building that are left to do is the masonry that will be the front of the office area and then the, the storefronts, if, if you want to call them that, those are the steel and glass areas that comprise the entryways into the school. And those are one of the last things we do because by leaving those open, it allows them to bring a forklift and so on into the building. And for instance, uh, our cabinet, uh, guy Kyle has been doing a lot of the cabinetry for the building, and so instead of him having to carry those heavy cabinets up the stairs, and we're able to load those on the forklift and move them to the second story as needed. Um, we also, because of where we were in our budget, we were able to actually expand the perimeter of the building to include at least the enclosure and the roof for the area that, uh, was originally designated in the plan as a special ed area. I don't know that we have money in the budget to fully, um, finish that area. Uh, I think we'll try and do that as we go along, but as you might recall, that, that, uh, included restrooms and a hoist system and, uh, a big, uh, sliding wall that divided to one large classroom into two smaller classrooms. And so those things will not, we won't be able to do right, uh, you know, when we take possession of the building, but we'll be in a great position, you know, because this space will be there. Uh, the exterior, the windows, you know, all those kind of things will be in place. Uh, and, and the space will be usable to some end, to the school district. As, as it will, will stand. Um, the, uh, we're really, I think we've, and Guy can weigh in on this, but, uh, I feel that we're in a really pretty good place on the budget. Um, and, uh, we have run into a couple of small issues. Through the winter, we discovered that the way our roof drain system was designed, that the roof drains were freezing. And so, uh, we've re-engineered those, we're gonna make some, um, changes to that design and how those are put together. That'll be covered out of, uh, headwaters contingency, so that won't be an additional cost to the district. As we, as we proceed into the spring, you're gonna see, uh, the, the work really ramp up now on the site. Uh, they'll get back in there, start moving earth. Our landscapers should, uh, get into that front area and start preparing that so that we'll have grass, uh, growing on that before the summer is, is ended. Uh, so that's, that's kind of where we are right now. Um, any questions that anyone has?
John. I don't have any questions, but I don't know how the others feel, but I'd be interested in a tour within the next few weeks, I don't know. Um, so I'll wear a mask, I'll wear a mask to keep the dust out.
I think after, uh, the sixteenth, this Saturday with the next stage, uh, we probably could take a group out there as long as there were ten or less and we coordinated with, uh, headwaters. There is a lot of, I mean, there's a lot to see, you know, uh, compared to where we've been, so I would be happy to work with Mary to, and Scott to arrange a time.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would really like that too. Uh, that was what I was gonna say, Chad, that I wanted to go see it, so. Yeah, if Mary, Mary, if you could put that down to communicate with the board and maybe John Pym and we can figure out after May sixteenth, a time for us to be able to go out there.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any other questions? Greg, I see you unmuted yourself.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, ask John to comment on, um, just the relationship with Headwaters and, and your ongoing perception of their professionalism and the way they're handling things.
Um, yeah, I, Headwaters, uh, on two fronts, I, I really have to give kudos to. Uh, we've had some issues arrive, rise with Thunder Ridge, and we're over our year now, and we're still having little issues arise, and they don't even blink. If I call them, they are just right on it. And, and I can't think that we would have ever gotten that with another delivery method where they would be so in tune. Uh, with, with, uh, the middle school, uh, the thing that's been the nicest is I think we all learned a great deal about the CMG process and about working together as a team through that Thunder Ridge. And so it's been awesome to build on that momentum, to have those relationships in place. And we have, the one thing I didn't mention, we've added another piece to this puzzle. You might recall that you approved a commissioning agent, uh, to be a part of this process. And after some of the issues we had on Thunder Ridge, you know, we thought this would be a great idea. Just the first two visits from our commissioning agent have really been impactful on this project. Um, he, he just went through the building, found some things that some of these guys are doing that, uh, just need to be changed right away, um, that are gonna benefit us a ton in the long run. Uh, we're working right now through many of the problems that we, we've spent an entire year and a half trying to work through on Thunder Ridge. Uh, we're, we're just getting those taken care of right now. And we're in a great place to take care of those, uh, because we got folks on site, the right people in place, and so I, I really feel like that is going to prove to be a tremendous investment in this project.
We're still on time?
We are still on time. We are really close. The COVID nineteen thing, uh, he's got listed on the schedule that we've lost seven days overall to the, to the virus because he's had to spread folks out, change the way we're bringing folks on and off site. But I think he had at least that much of a cushion built in anyway because of inclement, you know, the possibility of nasty weather, all that kind of stuff, so. He, he, uh, Eric still feels very good about where we are.
Fantastic. Thanks.
So John, uh, last year, not last year, uh, however long it's been now, I'm gonna think through, three years ago, uh, when we were about at the same stage with Thunder Ridge, uh, we were having multiple, uh, multiple discussions about budget cuts and trying to get things back under budget. Uh, we have not had to do that with Black Canyon, so, uh, just how are things on the budget with it?
So, yeah, in fact, it, it worked out so well. And initially, when we initially got our bids in, we, we were, we weren't nearly as bad as we were on uh, Thunder Ridge, but you know, it looked like, okay, we got, we got budget issues. Uh, we went to work on that, and, and that's one of the ways this team has been so awesome, you know, between the architects, between headwaters, between, you know, the subs, we were able to really ratchet down costs. In fact, uh, we, the reason we were able to add that extra space onto the building is because we were able to keep those costs totally under control, get right back on budget, and then we had that five hundred thousand dollars set aside thinking we might have to do the roundabout. Uh, when we convinced the county that we should not have to participate in that, it really is what gave us the, you know, the, the availability of that five hundred thousand dollars to do that bid alternate, which was that extra space in the building. Um, in talking to Eric, their contingency they've established is also in a good place. So when we discussed those changes this afternoon to the drain system, and I said, you know, I, I really feel like that ought to come out of your contingency, do you have room to do that? He said, that won't be a problem. Uh, we can absorb that. We're, we're in a really good place there as well, so. I just feel like overall, things are moving forward really well. Um, I know we still have a really, really tight FFNE budget. And, uh, so once we hit September and we really get serious about what furniture we're gonna put in the building and how we're gonna manage that, I still have concerns there, but, uh, I assure you, we'll, we'll make it through and we'll, you know, we'll make it come in on budget.
That's a great report, John. Thank you for sharing that with us, and I think we'll all look forward to being able to go out and, and see the progress that's been made. That'll be exciting. Is there any other questions from board members? I'm seeing Paul and Greg shaking heads now. Okay. And there's Scott Lynch, nothing. Scott, I didn't see you in that scan. Okay. John, thank you for that. And tell Headwaters, thank you for everything that they're doing too. All right, we're gonna go ahead and, um, have Dr. Wilson Hume present the state of the district to us.
Thank you Chairman Landers. So a couple, um, key things I want to update the board on tonight. Uh, the first one is just about, uh, it's just been over about two weeks ago, probably three weeks ago. Uh, we sent out a survey to our parents. I did this one, uh, really through, just through text messages, how people reply to it. So we had great response right back to the survey. Just wanted to do a quick check in to see how they felt things were going for their kids with the shift to online learning. And so this is the overall results from that. Uh, notice that they had five answers to pick from, uh, ranging from great to pretty good, okay, not so well, and terrible. And I think this speaks volumes about the work that our teachers have done, that our principals have done in this very rapid shift to online learning and really making the very best out of an extremely challenging situation, so all in all, uh, really, um, considering how quickly we had to make those changes, really pleased with, um, how well people have responded to it and, and the success our kids have had with that. Um, I didn't put in here- Um, I didn't put in Hilton as far as a chart, but there were some follow-up questions um, after this. Um, so if people indicated that things weren't going well, we got some feedback on what areas uh, were kids um, struggling with. And um, and then left that as an open-ended one as, as well. And so, um, of course, the, the schoolwork was a key thing that people talked about and just a challenge of doing schoolwork online without the support of a teacher. Uh, they also talked a lot about uh, the lack of um, social interactions, that their kids are really missing their friends and. Um, also their social interactions with their teachers was another one thing that they uh, talked about that um, was a real detriment with. Um, the switch to online learning, so super helpful information, um, some of the other. Items that people could identify is if they didn't have enough devices in their home, as well as if they still didn't have internet connectivity. So that gave us another option or another list of people uh, that I sent to technology to say. Um, let's cross-check this against the people that have requested hot, hotspots and make sure that we're getting these, our hotspots out to these families as well, so. All in all, I feel like this is a, a great step for us to take, uh, got great information back and just helped us to. Um, make sure that we were doing everything we could to keep kids connected, so any questions on this before I move into the next part?
I'll, I'll just say, I think it's fascinating that um. There's a, you know, one to three point difference at each level of their satisfaction, I, I mean. Just amazing.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's, it's good, I mean, you know, it, it kinda makes me think though that sometimes. These surveys are more about the people who are taking the surveys than they are about what they're giving this information about. Just because you gotta self-select almost, but anyway, it's, it's, it's good, and it, it does seem like. Pretty darn positive feedback considering the difficult circumstances.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Um, go ahead Chad.
I was just gonna say, I was just looking at that too, uh, in all three cases, we're over sixty percent, pretty good or great. You know, which is admirable, um, those that are not so well are terrible, I wonder how many of. Those are because. Students are not motivated or won't do anything, or maybe would be low anyway.
Um. Yeah, that, that was a lot of the feedback people gave, uh, saying what was challenging is. Um, parents are facing the same challenges that our teachers face on trying to keep your kids motivated and engaged in the learning and. And if kids weren't motivated before, um, then, then perhaps we're starting to experience that for themselves, and so. And I, again, I, I, it's, as a parent, it's been kinda fascinating to me to see with my five different kids, each one of them has had kind of their own. Individual and unique response to this, uh, some that I thought would do really well, have struggled more than I expected, and some, some I thought it would struggle of. Really done well, so it's just, it's been kind of an interesting thing to see um, here at home too.
Looks to me like a pretty traditional bell curve, bell curve.
Yeah, yep. Okay, so with that, uh, the other thing I wanted to, uh, take a few minutes to talk to the board about tonight is. I look at reopening schools and we'll have, we'll have a, a more of a discussion or detailed discussion at least about this with. Um, our plan or proposal to open up summer school this summer. Um, but I wanna take a few minutes and just talk about what we have to do to reopen our schools in the fall. So, the State Board of Education has issued um, criteria, and then they issued revised criteria. Um, to schools to say, this is what you have to do if you want your schools to reopen in the fall. And maybe just taking a step back, I think we've talked about this before, but um. I would say it, while, while I'm not sure that it was necessarily written this way, based on my. Conversations with members of the State Board of Education, um, they feel that when they said. All schools should close, that they were effectively closing the schools, so I guess that's just a key point, I'm, I know that we also. Took action as a board, cause at that time I wasn't sure, um, and still honestly, I'm not quite sure that they have the statutory authority to do that, but they. Stay, they cited the state statute, and it's also in the state, well, it's actually a state statute that says that the State Board of Education has. Um, control and direction of every school district in the state, and based on that, they have the authority to close our schools if they choose to. So with that, I do feel like it's incumbent on us that if we are, when we are ready to reopen our schools, that we have to make sure we're meeting the criteria that they've. Established. So here are the um, key steps, uh, the first one is that there cannot be any statewide stay-home orders. And Eastern Idaho Public Health has approved a physical distancing plan, there's a little bit of redundancy um, in their criteria as we go through this, so just know that's. Not me, that's from uh, the document that they've issued. Uh, statewide reopening criteria have been met, so this four-phase um, plan to reopen Idaho that Governor Little has issued. That all those criteria would have to be met and basically be on the other side of those four phases. Uh, public health officials would approve protocols for cleaning, disinfection and physical distancing. And the board, our school board would approve a reentry plan with the following minimum protocols. And those include cleaning and disinfection, identifying and planning for vulnerable staff and students. Identifying and planning for staff duties which require close contact, an absenteeism plan for staff and students. Which includes parents who do not feel comfortable returning, um, with their students returning to school, as well as students who show symptoms of the coronavirus. A communications plan, a point of contact for each school district to communicate effectively with our local public health officials. And then we need to review and develop those plans in consultation with Eastern Idaho Public Health. So that's everything that is currently in the state board's document that we would have to meet to reopen our schools in August. So, um. With that, what we started talking about and just had really our first conversation with principals about yesterday is. Um, I guess, right now what we've been in is either our schools are open or they've been closed, and I wanted to look at. What does it look like if, to look at middle ground between those two ideas, um, so that if there are. Physical distancing requirements, what are the steps we could put, we could put in place to uh, create physical distancing, so. So what we have is, um, basically starting here with a green is what it would look like if basically schools are open and things are back to normal. Um, and then red on the other side of the spectrum, uh, if schools are basically remaining our current situation of being closed with us offering online instruction. And then in between there, uh, two um, intermediate steps. Uh, based on the physical distancing restrictions that could be in place from our public health officials. Um, so a plan where essentially we'd have fifty percent of our students in attendance each day. And then a plan where we'd have either twenty or twenty-five percent of our students in attendance each day. And so you can see students would be physically present five days a week, uh, two to three days per week, one day per week, and of course, no days per week. So looking at that, um, I'm not quite comfortable with these uh, numbers for physical distancing yet. Uh, basically Don Troutvine was great, he sent me um, a detailed list of our schools and square footage, average square foot. Uh, square feet per classroom that's dedicated to desk space, so based on that, um, that's where these numbers come from, but I, I still wanna. Get out and actually physically measure between desks, cause it doesn't seem like those numbers quite get to where I would think they would be, but right now, based on just a square footage model. Uh, with no restrictions, it looks like it could be uh, essentially around five feet of um, social dis- or physical distancing between kids in the classroom. If we go to fifty percent, then it's about six feet, and if we go to twenty percent, it's about seven feet of um, physical distancing, and that's. Basically a seven-foot radius around kids. Um, the more challenging part, uh, that um, that comes into play with physical distancing is with our buses, and we found this out very quickly as we developed our plan for. Um, summer school busing, and so right now, um, as we bus kids. Uh, Mike Graham was great, he reported back to me today, and it's basically what I thought, I just wanted to confirm with him, but we put typically, um, up to three students. Um, per seat on our elementary routes and two students per seat on our secondary route, so. That essentially means that there's no physical distancing on our, on our school buses currently, or at least less than a foot of um, physical distancing. So if we, um, and again, not hard numbers yet, we need to vet this through, but as, as a. I guess we're good working ballpark numbers, uh, if we reduce our number of kids in our bus. Um, to by half, then we might be able to get up to two feet of physical distancing between kids. If we get all the way down to twenty-five percent, it's still probably only about three feet of physical distancing between kids, and um. You'll see some of that in our summer school documentation today, and then of course, there's lots of questions to answer about all, all of those. Uh, but just some of the ones you talked about with principals are listed there, um, underneath that, so. Uh, so I just know that that's really the, the plan that we're at least starting to put wheels on, that because there's key things we have to know now. Um, to make this happen for the fall. Especially when it comes to um, that idea that we would need to plan for parents who aren't comfortable sending their kids back to school. Really, right now, we need to know who those parents are and how many kids we're talking about, so we can make adjustments into teacher schedules and, and. At the secondary level at those students' class selections to make sure we've got a plan in place to accommodate uh, those concerns. Um, so with that, one of the key things that we have to consider is what does this look like when it comes to our average daily attendance? Uh, does a blended learning model um, fit with the state definition of attendance, and so. Um, right now, currently within um. State statute and also the attendance manual from the State Department of Education, um, states the districts. May offer instruction that's a blended virtual and traditional instruction, and we can report attendance as either the actual hours of attendance in a virtual school or. Their course completion, so fortunately, we've had a lot of experience with this because of Bonneville Online. Uh, I think our first year or two that we started up Bonneville Online, uh, we tried to do it with actual hours of attendance, and we ended up switching to a course completion model. Uh, which has really worked very well for both the online high school and the online elementary school. Um, and it would probably be the right model for us to follow, um, if we, if we do need to create a blended learning situation. Um, for kids in the fall. Um, there is some, for me, some, a little bit of discrepancy and some questions about. What actually counts as being attendance in a school? Um, again, if you notice here, they talk about actual hours of attendance in a virtual school, and I'm not quite sure how we define when a student is in attendance or when they're not. Um, when they're uh, participating in instruction at home. Um, and again, there's, there's one key phrase that I think creates some questions that we need to get answered. Uh, between the state board and the State Department of Education, so the state board's actual rule, uh, which is. And administrative procedures says, a school day for grades one through twelve may be counted as a day in session. When the school's open and students are under the guidance and direction of teachers in the teaching process. And that's really been the definition we've used as we've um, switched to our online learning um, for the last several months. The attendance manual, which is published by the State Department of Education, and I would say does not necessarily have the same force of rule that an ADAP rule does. But nonetheless, it's what governs us when we report our attendance to the State Department, uh, uses or adds in. Um, this nice ad, um, gotta think about that's an adjective or an adverb, I'm an English teacher, I should know that, physically present. Is physically present, I'm not sure, I think it's gotta be an adverb, but anyway, puts in the, the word physically there. And which, if you notice, is not in the actual ADAP rule, and that's always been a bit of a hang-up for us as we've looked at. Um, whether we can count attendance for kids, um, for example, on snow days, if we could provide instruction to them. Can we then count that as a school day, and this word physically present has always been the roadblock to that, so I think we absolutely have to push back and get. Clarification um, on whether or not this is a requirement as we report attendance for kids, so. Because our, our funding is all driven by that definition of ADA, and we can't jeopardize our funding with whatever model we put in. So those are the questions we need to get answered from the state level, uh, from our families, the key questions that we wanna talk about is. If we are able to open our schools in August, what are, what's their preference, and so again, trying to basically establish a baseline. Number, knowing that that number's going to change, but we need to get an idea now on what we need to plan for in the fall, so options ranging from going back to school in person like. Normal, uh, to continue learning at home and um, with online learning as we're currently doing. Or participating in a blended program by going to school on certain days with supported, uh, with online learning at home the rest of the time, and for the secondary levels. Uh, opening up the option, they may take some classes in person and some classes at home, which kids can do right now, but again, if, if. There's significantly more parents that are interested in that, or students that are interested in that this fall than we've historically had, we've got to know that now, so we can start to plan. Accordingly for it, because um, we'll have a limited number of spots open at Bonneville Online to take those students. And um, just also question on whether people feel safe having their students return to school as normal in August and just. Um, yes, kind of a, a spectrum of, um, or a range of options there. So beginning with, yes, even if the outbreak of the coronavirus gets worse, they're still more than happy to send their kids back to school, um, down to. They basically intend to keep their children at home regardless of what the situation is, and then some intermediate steps in between there. And I think the last one is just if there are, um, for people that are indicating. Um, on this question. Um, so if this is the selected answer, that only if schools take additional precautions. Uh, what those precautions are that people feel like would be important for us to take as a district, so again, not. Not that this survey necessarily dictate what we do, but it'd be really nice to get a sense of what parents' perceptions are on what they feel like we need to be doing to. Make sure their kids are safe. So that's, um, I guess where we're at right now, with starting to, just barely starting to think about next fall, and wanted to make sure the board is aware of that. And if you had any input or thoughts back to share with us as we keep pushing forward with this.
Scott, I think it looks, looks well done, you know. When I reviewed the summer. Um, program, that was well-written and one done, well-done. The thing that jumped out to me is what you commented on was busing. And that will be a challenge, um. And your comments about the State Board of Education. You know, I don't, I don't have a problem with guidance, I don't have a problem with. Um. Leadership at that level, but the word that bothers me is control. And I think that's the word that's in the statute.
Yes, I agree with both of those statements.
Revolution.
Party like it's Benico. That's, that's what I was gonna say, I think it gotta be like that.
Just, just for the record, I think that superintendent's retiring this year, so he's. A little more open to taking those uh, rebellious steps than I probably am.
Well, it looks good, Scott, I mean, I do think it's important to ask the parents where they're at, and it gives us an idea of what to. What we're looking at in the fall. Um, I know all the parents that I've been talking to, they're ready to send their kids back. And their.
Yeah.
Kids are wanting to go back, um, including my own, I asked my own kids how they're doing and. They're handling it fine, but they said they would much rather be in school. And I think most kids are feeling that, and I think most, at least, most parents that I've been talking to. I think are really, really wanting them to be able to go back, I, I've had a lot of questions about it and. Everybody keeps saying, this better quit, cause we want our kids back in school in the fall. Um, I know we don't have any control over that, so.
Well, I think, I think we will, yeah, I, I mean. It, it was, I would think we'd have to be basically in another statewide shutdown order for us not to at least have the option for us to open our schools up, and I. I think over the last several months, we've all just learned to live with the fear and anxiety that's there, and I think the. You know, if we see a serious uptick in the outbreak and the state takes additional measures, then that'll take it out of our control, but otherwise, I think we'll. Well, we should have quite of a discretion as long as we comply with this requirement to create a plan and, and our public health agencies. Uh, okay with it, so.
Yeah, I know that there's other states that have come up with plans, and Scott, I'm sure you're paying attention to this, um. I don't remember if it was Georgia or one of the Carolinas, but one of those states, um, they're going back to school and they're doing. Only half the school can attend Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the other half attends Tuesday, Thursday. And then the next week they switch, but on those days that they're not in school, they're doing online learning, and so they only have their schools with half the kids in them. Um, every single day, pretty much, and, and I think, yeah, that, that's a great solution, and it would. It would have. I don't know, it would really help us with as far as our overcrowding and everything goes, but the thing that concerns me. And I've talked to quite a few parents about this as well, is the daycare. Um, and having those kids home with their parents working and stuff every other day. It's been kind of a big concern that I've been hearing from parents, so everybody keeps saying, they better not do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been interesting. Yeah, it's been interesting.
Do we have enough staff to do the daily cleansing of everything?
Yeah, I think so. It would, it would certainly, some of that responsibility would have to fall to the classroom teacher. I don't think we have enough custodial staff for them to do it, but I think it's not bad for kids to learn to take care of those things themselves too. So really, it's a matter of getting, you know, affordable cleaning supplies out into the classrooms, which we, we were working on this right before we closed the schools down. We'll certainly be doing things differently than we've done in the past, so frequent cleaning of Chromebooks, honestly, that's something that I don't think really occurred to any of us before. And so that'll be part of our daily routines. Cleaning desks will be part of the routines, but again, all good things that we can use both classroom teachers and kids to help with.
Amy, if I could weigh in just a moment, one of the, one of the good bits of good news, Lou has really been working hard to go green, if you will. To, to buy products that are by, by being green or environmentally friendly, they're also far more friendly to students. If, if we do, as Dr. Wilson Hume suggests, when we begin to get the students involved in some of that. That puts us in a much better situation to do that.
Yeah, I just talked to Lou about that earlier today when I ran out to the district office, but you know, it is true when you're using all the, the sanitizing chemicals that that has an impact too on the people that are using them every day. Not good. And so it is a good thing, I think, that Lou is trying to do by going green.
John, there's been discussion about lighting that might help and I'm sure it would, I'm sure it's expensive and maybe for smaller spaces. This type of lighting that would, would help with sanitation and.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, Chad, I haven't looked in that enough. I mean, I, I'm aware of the, there's some folks advertising that pretty heavily. Most of the things I have seen are, you know, for your home, what kind of bulbs you would put in your home. So I'll, I'll look into that a little further, see if they're actually making bulbs that would fit in the type of fixtures that we, we have in our classrooms in our schools.
Madam Chair, if I can, and Dr. Wilson Hume, I just wanted to thank you for your comments yesterday. I totally agree when when you did your live, when you said, you know, I think in, in all of our hearts, we realize that the right place for students is in the schools and in the buildings. And I totally agree with that. I think this has shed some light on that and especially with parents and families and, and kids themselves. You know, my kids say the same thing. They're excited when they don't have to go to school, but lately they've they've actually been saying how excited they are, you know, to go back to school and to get back to the norm. But, you know, a lot of these things are out of our hands. And so it's really going to come down to the phases that, you know, the governor set forth and, and trying to meet those phases. And, you know, and then obviously we have to have a game plan. We may not even know where we're going to be, you know, when August rolls around. We don't know, you know, exactly what's going to happen if, if all the phases are going to be complete or not. So it's a really, it's a hard thing to do, but I think preparation's the key and having plans in place and everything that we're doing. You know, obviously, we've got to have a plan of attack and, and think of all the things that you know, scenarios that, that could be there even if they're not. So I, you know, I appreciate all the hard work we're doing and and the plans that we have and just hope and pray for the best in this situation so we can get these kids back to normal. There's a lot of vulnerabilities too, like with kids that we have in the district that, you know, that are medically fragile already or sick or have an autoimmune, you know, immune disease. And, you know, we have teachers that way, family members. And so it's always good to have a risk assessment plan for you know, a kid that may contract the virus at school, you know, what do we do then? How do we isolate it? You know, maybe we have to take the whole class and quarantine them. And so there's a lot of variables and questions that will come up, you know, over the next few weeks. But I think, you know, if we, if we keep, you know, looking at every angle and have a plan in place, I think that's going to be key for us to be able to you know, effectively open a school. So just appreciate all the hard work and thoughts going into that.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
And I think Dr. Wilson Hume, the plan would be a hundred percent. But then we can always pull that back and alter it. But if we plan on a hundred percent. And, you know, with with everyone being in school, how do we, how do we clean? How do we take care of students and teachers? But realizing that we may have to back off and maybe do the fifty percent, I or less, but plan for the best and and just be flexible.
Yep, I agree, Chad. And that's, that's certainly our goal is we'll be working towards the hundred percent opening. That's what the plan will be. And then we'll have these alternates in place if there are physical distancing requirements in place that we have to meet. So the other, the other part to it though is much like we were doing before, before the statewide shutdown. Is creating a plan for those families who don't feel comfortable sending their kids back to school. And how could we accommodate them with supporting learning at home? And that, that's going to take quite a bit of work right now for us to adequately plan for that. For again, potentially assigning teachers to teach sections of online classes or even at the elementary level, level, might even be a teacher to get assigned to teach a whole class or kids at home, depending on how many kids want to do that. So that's primarily where our efforts will be focused for the next probably three to four weeks. And then once we get summer school up and running and we see how things are going there, we'll start working on the plan to have a hundred percent of our kids back in in the fall.
Scott, when are you thinking that this survey is going to go out to our parents?
I'm hoping by the end of the week.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would like the results of that, which I know we've got a meeting. I think, is it next week? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I would like to hear how the results of that I guess came out.
Well, I know Greg loves surveys too, so he's super excited to hear about those results.
I do have one comment on your list of questions. All kidding aside. The, you know, the busing issue that you highlighted is such a challenge to have distancing. I wonder if you could, or if you think it's worthwhile to modify that question so that the busing's kind of a separate question, so you get the sense of the six foot. Because I just don't think it's probably even possible to do six foot distancing in the busing. So I wonder if it'd be good to separate that out.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's a good thought break.
Is there any other questions for Dr. Wilson Hume?
I think it's well done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott, for all the work that you guys are doing. This is crazy times. Everything that's going on right now is just crazy. So thank you for spending so much time on all of this.
Madam Chair, may I make a request?
Yeah.
Scott, would you mind sending those PowerPoint slides to me, to the board?
Yeah, you'll have them. Yep. And apologize if they weren't in the board packet. We had the discussion yesterday in principals meeting and I was working today on getting everything together, but I'll absolutely make sure they get to the board and they'll be in a minute as well. But yes, I'd have to do that, Paul.
Cool, thanks.
All right, if it's okay, Dr. Wilson Hume will go ahead with the curriculum adoption policy. Is that okay?
Yes, Jason's very anxious and excited to talk about that.
I bet. All right, Jason, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank, thank you, Amy. I, I am. I told Scott, I said, my goal. Yesterday, we were talking about it and something, we're still talking about that? And I said, yeah, my goal is to have Scott say something inappropriate in every board meeting, so. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And, well, and just kind of a refresher and, and we're not really asking for anything, just more of a discussion with some items that we found out when we were researching the dual, dual credit curriculum. And then if you remember, we were working on this policy, our curriculum material policy, gosh, starting at the beginning of the school year. And the plan was, was to take to take three policies, basically policy twenty-five-twenty, which is our curriculum materials. Twenty-five-thirty, our learning materials review, and then twenty-five-forty, which is our selection and adoption of curriculum materials. And, and take those policies and put them into just one policy. One of the things that we've found as we're going through our, our different policies is there's just different statements in different places that then as a, and administrators were trying to figure out, well, I think this was the answer. And then all of a sudden we find out later on that, oh, there was another policy that also talked about something else. And so with this one specifically, we were trying to make sure that we had everything in kind of a one stop shop for, for administrators so that they know where things are. So even at the beginning of the year, that was one of the goals that we had for that particular policy. And then of course, as we've, as we've gone through the, the school year and had the, the issue with the dual credit novel, some other things have come up that we, we're looking at this policy. So our learning team too, well, I don't know, feels like two weeks ago, might have been a week ago, could have been six weeks ago, who knows? But we were looking through the, this policy and really what we did is put it in a Google Doc and said, okay, everyone just over the next couple of days. Make some suggestions. And so what we've done is we've added some suggestions to that policy. And let me see if I'll share my screen so that you can see that. See that policy. But, so here's the here's the, the policy that, and, and you have it in your, your packet. But if you look at this policy, really what, like I said, it's taken three policies and put them into one. And then also looking at ISBA and the different things that they had have, have on just different suggestions. The big changes that I would say, and like I said, these are just all, it's all draft and it's just conversations that we want to have with you of, of things that we've added. The two the two big, I guess, big items in this policy. Well, I feel like there's two big ones. And is this one here, the selection of dual credit material. So I also put into the board packet an email that we received from ISBA. Quinn Perry is their policy person. She's been great to work with, just in different things that we have worked through last year with the different things going on in the legislature that she wanted our input from. But she's just been great. So I asked her, I, I posed the question to her of, hey, what do we do with, with dual credit curriculum? I said, what, what happens is we, I mean, just, just our concern that we have is we, we have a teacher that says, well, this is what I want to teach, then a parent has an issue with it. And then we, we go back and the university says, well, you can't do that. That, that will then mess with our accreditation. And I said, but then we're fighting the the statutes and board rules. And she basically just said, it's a, you know, it's a great, great, great question. And so she said they threw out, it was probably a day and a half before she responded back. And she just said, we've been, we've been talking about this and with our lawyer and with our team and what we, really what we feel like that the parental rights bill is K-12. It doesn't, it's not for the universities. So as they talked about that, she said that it's really up to the, the university and, and their curriculum material. And in fact, she said that one of the things that she'll probably do with the policies is she'll be changing or adding that addition to the ISBA policies and, and the board, board policies. So, so talking with Scott and we kind of talked through what, you know, what can that look like? So this was the section of the selection of dual credit material and that dual credit classes are primarily university courses subject to the policies of the sponsoring university. Then, and then the other, the comment that we have in there, or the next number two is the board delegates authority for curriculum materials approval to the university. And then three is teacher, teachers of dual credit courses will ensure that parents and students are aware of the curriculum being taught, will make the curriculum available for preview by the students and parents. And one of the things that also along with this, Mary looked at ISBA and their advanced opportunities policy. To see what changes they have right now. And like I said, I think, I think we're getting some guidance specifically to dual credit material like Quinn had said. One of the things that she even said in that email, and I think we've talked about it, and then the form that parents fill out. So currently in our advanced opportunities policy, there's a form that goes with it that, that parents do fill that out. And they one of the, I think one of the important things is, is when, and Cory, him and I've had this conversation as well. He said, yeah, you know, we need to make sure that that our teachers are making sure that if their parents do have questions about the curriculum, that even at the registration time, that we have that curriculum available. And that was one of the things that Quinn had said in her email that would be beneficial. So that was the, I guess, the first big change to that. And then the second change was we were adding the process for our selection of supplemental material. And so what we did in that one was just add, add the process that teachers need to do to go through getting curriculum, supplemental curriculum approved and then purchased. What happens a lot of times, the teacher will, will submit a textbook requisition form. And in the past, it was, well, if they submitted that, okay, then we, we're going to purchase the, the textbook for them. But what's happened now, and it's awesome that we have Laserfish, it's just awesome for forms. And, and so what Abby Anis has set up is that on that textbook requisition form, it has a link that teachers can click on to see if whatever they're asking to be purchased, if it's been approved and it's on our supplemental curriculum materials list. So they click on that. If they can't find it in there, then there's a link for them to click on to then go to the supplemental curriculum materials. And then from there, it goes through our learning team to approve or not approve. And if it's approved, the learning team. Then they would, would be able to purchase that textbook or whatever the supplemental materials would be as well. If it's not approved and, and we don't come to the board saying, hey, you know, our recommendation would approve this, then really, really, I really, in this portion, it was just following what happened with the novel of then saying, you know, the teacher, if you feel like this you want this approved and us as the learning team are not approving it, well, you can go to the board and say, I feel like this needs to be approved. I know the recommendation is not approved, but I feel like it, it should be. And then they can have that conversation with you as a board. And so that goes through that, has the links in there. One of the other things that, that Scott brought up that I think is a great point, in our policies. I, I feel like if we have those links in there, it would be beneficial for whether it's teachers or principals or whoever else to know that, gosh, and here's the policy and it's saying this form for them not to have to go hunting for it, but it's already right there.
Jason, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, yep, go ahead.
On that supplemental material and everything that's on the screen right now. When they have to get that approval or, you know, go to that list and see if it's already on there. Is that at the cost to the district or the students to purchase those materials?
The, those, those are being purchased by the district.
Okay, and so does this solve the problem that we've had brought to the board? Does it solve it at all? Because that book that they're complaining about. I know it's not a textbook.
It's, it's, well, and, and let me, I guess, so on the textbook requisition, and it's kind of an old name, we probably should change that because it, it's really just any basically a curriculum material requisition form. Really that they're filling out for, whether it's a novel or supplemental or a textbook. It's just, I think, always been named textbook because that was the big purchases before.
Right. So if a teacher wants to, to use the book Right. So if a teacher wants to, to use the book that has. You know, the roundhouse book or whatever that we've had, you know, the problem with. And it's not on our approved list, does that count under this policy that we're looking at?
The, to me, it goes back up to the, the. That we, we wouldn't be, yeah, to that portion there, to the selection of dual credit material, because we wouldn't have the ability. It's the, the, the board would be delegating their authority to the approval of the university. So really, it's not dual credit material. All of that is our K twelve material, not dual credit material.
Right. But if they're wanting the board to approve them buying it for a dual credit course. And they have to go through the process listed below. And we don't have that book approved and we tell them no. Doesn't it solve the problem?
No, because I guess for me, we wouldn't be able to tell them no. I, I think that, so here, and I think this is the, and Corey and I talked a little bit about this. One of the things that. I think all of our principals and, and have with their teachers, when it become, comes down to showing a video, for example, is understand. You have to understand a couple of things. You have to understand the area that you live, the, the, whether it's beliefs, you know, the system, a number of different things. I mean, living in Idaho falls, Idaho is different than living in California. It ju- it just is with, and, and so those are conversations with our teachers. And. One of the things that Corey and I had talked about with, he, he meets regularly with the dual credit teachers. And having those conversations of. Like I, she had talked about, they're not necessarily approving or not approving a curriculum. What they're doing is looking at the. Sylabus that the, the teacher turns in and what's that syllabus that's turned in, whatever books are on there, that's what should be taught.
Yeah. And I, I understand what you're saying. And it almost seems like these things are. I don't know, maybe I was probably, I just don't maybe understand it, but. I understand the number two on the selection of dual credit material that, you know, you're saying the board would delegate authority for them to pick. But if it's going to require the school district to pay for the material and it's not on our. List of approved things that we're willing to pay for. Wouldn't, that's what I'm asking, I guess, is wouldn't that solve the problem? Because yes, they can pick what they want, but we wouldn't pay for it.
Yeah. So Amy, to that point. That's part, I guess, probably a large reason why I included the number four statement on here. And I, I'm honestly not a hundred percent sure how I feel about it, other than. I feel like if the universities are saying this is a university class and you need to meet university expectations. Every university class I ever took, I was responsible for purchasing the books for that class. And so I, I guess I'm, I'm willing to. Once we get a sense from the board on how you feel about this language, we've run it through Doug Nelson to make sure, but I'm, I'm perfectly fine with saying. For individual novels that kids are going to read in the dual credit class, they need to be responsible for purchasing those.
Jason, this is Chad. So to me, the key is number three. Teachers of dual credit courses will ensure that parents and students. Are aware of the curriculum being taught and will make the curriculum available for a preview by the students and the parents. So. I think, I, I think the teachers need to understand that. That. You know, needs to be adhered to and. And they really do need to make the curriculum available to the students and the parents. Unlike a university, our students are still subject to parental guidance. And I don't, it's my understanding that in the case of novels and certain types of literature, it's largely up to the teacher on what they select. And so I'm hoping that if whether it's Corey or a principal could kind of do some coaching. To the teachers and. Make sure they're aware of our culture in our community and in our schools. So that the problem we've had doesn't arise again, but. If the university is going to be the one in charge of the curriculum and. And we're subject to them. Number three to me is a really important key in implementing this properly.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. I agree, Chad. And, and, and that's the conversation that Corey and I have had over the last just month of. There are a number of things that he goes through when he meets with those teachers and, and we've even talked as, as administrative, administrative team of, you know, what policy is, do we need to make sure that our teachers have. Our administrators and our teachers have a good idea of here, here's the policy and here's why when we, we say. You know, those, that, those curriculum items should be available to be previewed, but also if, if you know something could be somewhat controversial, even somewhat controversial. Those should be conversations that you're having with the parents and the students before it even takes place.
Well, I even think.
Can I circle back to. Yeah, let me, let me circle back to your question for a minute. I think it's a key one. And that is, I think, I think what could happen if we. If we forget about number four for a minute, I'm really not sure if we'll be able to keep number four in there or not. But essentially what we're saying is in number two, we're delegating, the board is delegating its authority for curricular materials approval to the university, which then means. If the university approves that syllabus, then we would automatically put that onto the board agenda for approval to purchase those books if we needed to purchase them.
Even if they were not on our approved list?
Well, they would, I'd say they would be on your list to be approved because under, under number two, we're delegating that authority to the university. So therefore, we're saying whatever the, whatever the university approves for curriculum materials, if as a district, we're still responsible to purchase. All materials for kids, which I think again is a good question to ask Doug, and I don't think they have a clear answer because the lawsuit has not yet been settled at the Supreme Court. But if it is, then we would purchase those.
So I guess a couple of maybe different examples. And I know this came up in one of our meetings and I don't remember when or. Who was on or if it was still one of the meetings that we had in person prior to the shutdown. But I know it came up at one point that we talked about. If we're going to relinquish, you know, that authority to the, the colleges. And we have maybe an art class or something and they decide that in that art class, they would like to draw nudes. And we're talking, this is the community that we live in. And I think we all have a pretty good idea of what community, the community is going to support, not support. And if we say, well, we're not gonna. We're not going to have any authority to tell them that they can or can't do that. And then the kids that take that course are subject to that. I realize that number three, they would be aware of it prior to going in, but what about the kids that do take it? I mean. I guess I look at that with kids that age, it seems more pornographic than academic. To say the least. And so. I would not be okay delegating my authority. If that's the kind of stuff that starts coming up, or if they have videos that are a little bit more. Risky, you know, for, I guess, that are just maybe extreme videos. And I think that you're going to find teachers that would push your limits. And, and on the flip side of it all, I guess I look at. What if it was BYU Idaho that was sponsoring the dual credit? And in that course, they maybe pushed for. I don't know, in the course, maybe it was just a heavy emphasis on the doctrine of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. And. I know that that wouldn't fly for a dual credit class when, you know, we have this separation of church and state within our schools. I, I just, I guess I'm trying to look at it on the flip side too, when you're going to the extreme. So you take. The religion look at it, but then you flip it and you take the extreme look at it. And I. I don't know how comfortable I feel just saying you guys have full authority and we'll purchase whatever it is that we, you need, you know, that you guys are authorizing. I don't know.
That's why we're having this discussion is that's, that's why this isn't a policy for initial consideration. We're doing this now. So we know what to put in a policy based on the feelings of the board.
Um, this is Greg. I just have one comment on number two. It, it doesn't seem to me that we're, I don't think I'm comfortable with the idea of the board delegating authority. It seems to me we're acknowledging that if we offer. University courses, that it is the authority of the university to determine the curricular materials. I'm not delegating them anything. I'm just acknowledging that that's a consequence of. Of this board's decision to offer dual credit classes, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I like that verbiage.
I think the thing that bothers me is we're still on the hook to purchase the things that don't really go along with our approved. Stuff with our curriculum. I don't know if that bothers anybody else. That bothers me a lot.
No, I, I mean, I'm uncomfortable to, I, I assume it's the same tension that we've been talking about from day one on this topic. That the. Obligation to pay is a function of the constitution of the state of Idaho, I assume. If, if in fact Doug Nelson agrees that that's our obligation. And, and then the tension comes because of the fact that if we want to offer dual credit classes, then. We have to acknowledge that the university has some authority over, over. What materials are required for that, for that course and that, that thus the tension. But I don't know how you. Solve that other than by not having dual credit courses.
Right. And I think that's the key, Amy. And ultimately, ultimately it is the board's. Discretion on whether or not to purchase any particular materials or whether to offer the class in the first place. And so if, if for example. Like, like at the novel level, I'm fairly comfortable having kids purchase those, but let's say we have a textbook and now it's a hundred and fifty dollar textbook. I'm really not comfortable saying kids have to purchase a hundred and fifty dollar textbook. But it, it is not outside the scope of possibility that a teacher could recommend a textbook. In a particular course that the board wasn't comfortable with. And so if the board then said. You know, if the university has the authority to prove that, but we're not going to purchase it. Then just like we talked about this class, the outcome of that could simply be that that class doesn't get offered. And so. I would say I don't think our kids will ever, I don't think we would have put our kids into a situation. That the board is inherently uncomfortable with. It's just, we're going to have to be willing to live with the decision and the ramifications that there may be courses that we no longer offer in our, in our district because of this. And like this course, those could have serious ramifications for kids getting associate's degrees and may actually cut them off the possibility of them getting associate's degrees. But those are, that's the tension Greg's talking about and what we have to live with on the level of comfort we have with universities approving those materials.
Yeah, I kind of feel like this is somewhat like a teacher issue, I guess, because. If the teacher can submit whatever their syllabus is going to be or their, what books they're going to use, you know, to fulfill certain objectives within the class. It then becomes the teacher issue. And those are our teachers. And so I do feel like it's really important that those teachers are. Selected carefully and that they're trained and that they understand. This is high school. That they need to keep things appropriate and, and, you know, pick things, I guess, that are on our approved list. And if they want something else approved, to bring it to the board or bring it to Jason's team. You know, and try to get those things approved. But I think we would know that prior to putting them in as one of our dual credit teachers. And if. We have people that are going to kick against that and want to go. Rogue and do things, you know, a little bit more extreme. I think we need to be really careful. About who we're assigning to teach those classes if they're not willing to stick with. Stuff that's approved, I guess, because we don't have to have them teach those. But this, the college is going to accept whatever they turn in. That, that's kind of what ISU said the other day.
I, I know Corey, Corey had brought up that a teacher, I mean, we do, we do have that where a teacher was looking at like a, an intro to art class, but was. Nervous about the Renaissance period of teaching, of teaching that. So the teacher just decided not to teach the class. So there are, you know, there are, and, and I think Corey's having those conversations with the, the teachers, just like you had said of. Of i- i- if, if we have dual credit classes and it continues to be an issue with, with whether it's parents or students with the content. What starts to happen is to stop taking that class. Now, again, having to fight that with, with the battle of the student trying to get their associate's degree and what has to come from that. But. But I know those are conversations that Corey is having with those teachers.
Yeah, I, I do know. ISU is just as reliant on us as we are on them. You know, we're wanting to use them for our students, you know, to get the degrees and get their credits that they're looking for. And they're wanting to use us because they need the money. And so it is a mutual relationship that we have with them. They, they need us just like we need them. And so. I don't know, I guess. I think we can have a little bit more persuasion over. Our teachers and selecting who's going to, to be teaching and if they're going to follow. The district approved curriculum. Before we put them in there and then cause ourselves a total headache.
Well, I. I agree with that, Amy and Scott. I agree with your comments. We do have choices. And if we continue to have this type of issue, we simply don't offer the class. Maybe that's problematic with getting an associate degree, but. There's, there's literature out there that teachers can select that will accomplish their goals. And so, yeah, I think it's a teacher issue. And. You know, we do have choices and. And I like Greg's wording on number two. Cause it sounds like we're just turning it over to the university, but we do have some choice in this.
So I guess if. If that's the sentiment of the entire board, we probably need to look at language in the dual credit policy. Regarding that, I'll be honest, it makes me a little bit. Cautious on how do we, what criteria are we going to use to select our dual credit teachers? It's going to be. Really close to not discriminate against teachers based on our individual values. So. I'd say we, we need to think probably long and hard and work closely with Doug Nelson if we're going to. From within our teachers, we've already hired, if we're going to use criteria to determine who can and cannot teach dual credit classes.
But Scott, I think that's maybe. I guess pushing it a little bit. Over the line, I guess, because I don't really think we're asking them to follow values. It's just, we have a list of approved curriculum already. And so you're just asking them to do what they're already supposed to be doing anyway, as a teacher in our school district. For those college classes. And if there's something that they want to be approved and it's not on that list, to bring it forward and, and meet with Jason's team and. Have that come to the board and go about it that way. But I don't, I don't really feel like we're asking them to follow certain values. We're just, we're just asking them to follow board policy. And the policy is that we have approved curriculum.
But isn't the prove, approved curriculum? Part of a value system?
If you want to say that, but I mean, take the word value out of it. It's just a list of approved. Materials. You don't have to work, use the word value. I think that gets into. I guess a religious connotation of things. And if that's what we're going to do, then take the whole. Curriculum thing out and we just let everybody teach whatever the crap they want to teach. I mean, we, we have rules. We're asking them to follow our rules. They teach for us. They're our teachers.
Right. Right. So, so just talking through that. So essentially, I mean, what we talked about is. I, I still think number two is a hinge point and that is. So if we say that the board acknowledges that the university has the authority to approve curriculum materials. We would still expect teachers. Expect teachers to submit um, requests for. Books that the board would purchase, if I'm finding that correctly. And again, I think we're right back to the same point we've been, and I'm, it's fine if that's the point we're at, but then if the board denies that. Then we end up with it back at the same tension between us and the university.
Well, so Scott, I guess what I'm thinking is that this would. Come, I, between the principal and the teacher, I guess, when they're, is that who asks them to teach a dual credit is the the principals?
Not necessarily, a lot of times what happens is the teacher. Um, not anybody can teach a dual credit class, they typically have to meet the university's requirements for teaching. And so as a teacher potentially earns a master's degree, then um, they may start to approach the principal and say, hey, I have my master's degree in art or English or. History, whatever it is, and I'd like to teach dual credit. Um, or if a dual credit teacher resigns, somebody asks if they can step up and take those classes and. Um, so, and if a principal knows, I guess to your point, if a principal knows the teacher is qualified, then they may reach out to that teacher and ask them to teach the course.
Right, and so I think before we ever get to number two. That um, that agreement is made with those teachers that are wanting to teach those courses or. Who are currently teaching them. That that agreement's made that they'll follow the list of approved curriculum prior to even giving them approval to teach the course. So that when we do get to number two in our policy. We know that what they're going to turn in. Is within our bounds. I guess, so it.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think that wholly solves it, because if if what we're saying is. Dual credit teachers can only teach from what we've already approved. Um, that's going to be a a very large roadblock for. I mean, the universities change their adopted um textbooks all the time, teachers are typically. I I just think that. That really locks us into saying whatever was published in twenty twenty or before is all that could ever be approved, right? So I guess what what I, what we have is a process for teachers to bring. New things for us to get approved.
Yeah, and I, that's what I said, they can bring whatever they want to the board. And we can add it to the list if we feel comfortable doing so.
Right, but if we don't, right, I mean, that's that's the tension, it's just if we don't, then we're we're we'll end up in the same situation with. ISU and the cost of that could be the fact that we're. So I, to me, it really just comes down to, one, we don't necessarily have to have an agreement with teachers, because when they sign their contract, they're going to follow the board part, they're signing a. Contract that says we're going to follow the board policy, so what we want to do is make sure we have the right policy in place. That meets the board's expectations, clearly communicate that with teachers and make sure that every teacher, regardless of whether it's a dual credit or not, is following this policy. Cause it could happen not just in a dual credit class, it could happen in um, another class that a teacher just, you know, like Jason said, shows a video that isn't on. Align to it, um, happens to pick a novel and they go to the store and they buy the novel themselves and they have that to kids, there's. There's other ways that this policy could get circumvented besides dual credits, we. We need to make sure every teacher's following it, but I just want to make sure that what we have here is meeting the board's expectations.
Is, are there any monies that come either to the teachers or anyone from ISU? Or whatever it might be?
Yes.
In the form of. Do they, do they pay part of the teacher's salary?
Not to us, but they they provide the teacher with compensation from the university. Not every university does that and not every university pays the same amount, but the universities also compensate. I'd say most of the universities also compensate teachers in addition to what the district. Compensate pays, in addition to their regular salary that we pay.
I I believe all the universities we're working with or colleges are compensating our teachers directly. Um, several years ago, that money came to the school and was utilized in the classrooms for the teachers within s- the schools. Um, but that's now paid directly to the teachers for those um, dual credit classes.
Scott, Scott, we have uh, Cory is on and I don't know if he has any clarification or any information that may be helpful as well.
Yeah, I can jump in here. So one of the things we've talked about is, like every year at the beginning of the school year, I do like a two or three hour training with just with all the dual credit teachers. And AP teachers alike. Um, just working with them on. On how to work through the portal and and advanced opportunities and. And Jason and I have talked quite a bit about adding this piece in as part of our instruction as we work with. With the dual credit teachers, just to make sure that they understand the policies and the things we have to go through. But the one other thing we need to work on, you need under, we need to understand is. When a teacher is approved. They're submitting their syllabus at the same time. That they're submitting their textbook requisition or or supplemental materials to us to approve. Because that timeline is generally so short, um, and the turnaround so short with getting them approved. At the college as well as getting those materials approved, so. Um, again, it's going to be a matter of of either myself or the principals working with that teacher and making sure we understand what they're looking at and they're putting out their syllabus. Which we have not done a great job of in the past, and and it's, and it's, and we've left it to the colleges because that's been. That's been our understanding, that's what I have understood from all the early college programs is that. The materials and the syllabi is up to them to approve. And and we have just purchased those through curricular funds from the district. Um, in order to support students in the advanced opportunities program. When we first started this here five years ago, so. And and granted, we've got to a point where we, things have changed, we've, and we have to adjust. But I think we can make those adjustments very easily going forward and and. As long as we have a policy that we can work within, and and I think that's the key is, we have a policy that we can work with. And not violate the accreditation at the college level. I mean, I think when we start saying you can or you can't teach this, that that becomes a sticky point with the colleges and. And it affects their accreditation.
I think the thing that that bothers me is that ISU said they'd pretty much take whatever the teachers turned in. Which we saw is true this past semester or trimester. Or year, whenever this came down, I think in second try, so it's probably a while ago that that got turned in, but. Um, they pretty much take whatever and Hillcrest and Bonneville had different books than Thunder Ridge and. They were all approved, they all met the same objectives, you know, they. So I guess, I don't know. I don't know how comfortable I am. Letting go of some of that. When there are teachers and they're agreeing to this in their contract. But then they go out and get a dual credit and they can pretty much just do whatever they want.
Amy, maybe, maybe it would help, I mean. It seems to me our job as a board is to recommend, if we don't like the. Draft policy that the administration has prepared just to help facilitate this discussion, seems like our job is to say. Or a majority of us to say, here's how we want that policy to change and.
Yeah, yeah.
I I don't know what, you know, anyway.
Well, I guess then with that, Greg, my hangup is probably with. With, I mean, with number two, I guess, I mean. I just feel like if we had, if we talked to our teachers prior to them becoming a dual credit teacher and they were aware that they'd signed our contract and. Had agreed to. You know, these terms to be employed in our school district that we're kind of expecting, not kind of, but we are expecting those same. You know, things out of them when they go to teach a dual credit course. So I don't know, I don't know how to, I don't know how to reword.
If I'm understand, yeah, so if I'm understanding that, Amy, I think what I'm hearing is. That you and your preference would be that we do not um, acknowledge the university's authority to approve the dual credit. Um, curriculum materials and we reserve that right as a board. And then the expectation for our teachers is simply that they get approval for whatever curriculum materials are going to use in their classroom.
I don't know, that that's, I don't know if I necessarily agree a hundred percent with the wording of that, and Scott, I'm not being very helpful. Because I don't know how to reword it, I'd have to think about it. Because, I mean, I do think that if our teachers know that, then we shouldn't really have a problem with number two. And if we had met with them prior and made sure that they were aware that they had signed our contract and. I don't know, I'd have to think about how to reword that.
Scott, I I would suggest that maybe you reword number two as Greg suggested, and I think Cory's comments are. Really critical. To have those. Conversations and and coaching the teachers. And I think we can move forward in a positive way with this and not have any more problems, if we have more problems, we're going to have to. You know, do something different or maybe not offer that particular class.
And and yes, they are, the teachers are under contract to us. But if they're receiving remuneration from the universities, they're also technically under contract to them too.
Right.
And from the, from the university's perspective, they're very much adjunct professors.
I I really support the words that uh, that Greg came up with. I'm good with that.
What does that mean, Scott adjunct professors, that means they can teach whatever they want?
Part time.
No, it just means that they consider them to be their employees as well.
And and I think they would also. Feel very strongly that the same academic freedom. Rights that apply to their full-time faculty also apply to their adjunct faculty.
Yeah, I think they made that pretty clear to us.
Yeah, so, I'll just say, I I a hundred percent support Greg's recommendation on number two. I I personally still have a lack of clarity on on whether or not the board is going to retain that there. Our authority to still approve those materials or not. So we're acknowledging that the university has that, but then what I'm hearing is we still expect the the teachers to go through the process with the board to get things approved. Um, at least if the board is going to purchase those, and I I think those might be. I don't think that that's helping provide clarity on what the expectations are for teachers.
Um, I agree. In other words, um, I I don't think. If we change number two in the way we're suggesting that that necessarily. Resolves anything about the issue of controlling what teachers. What novels teachers use, to be just very specific about it.
I guess I think what um, what bothers me then is the examples that were brought up, you know, if. If you had a course that was heavily. Um, somewhat cross lighting a specific religion, there's not a dang thing you could do about it. Am I right?
You're, no, I think there's lots we can do about it, we can just eliminate that course. And and now, I think that's our, that's the retained control that it seems to me the. The whole idea of dual credit classes in encompasses, that is. We decide whether we want to offer dual credit courses, but we don't decide or we don't dictate to the university. What they do in their dual credit courses.
So Greg.
Like what they're doing, then our responsibility is to, I mean, if we can't get them to change it. Then our responsibility is to not offer it, seems to me.
Right, would we, I guess, would we be able to not offer it, um, like if we knew. Something was going to be, you know, highly controversial, could we just, once we found that out? Could we just say, oh, we're just, we're just not even going to have that class be an option right now? Or would you make that whole, you know, trimester or one year's worth of kids go through it and then cancel it the following year?
Well, I think under our policy that we're talking about, the. No, we're not making anybody do anything, they're going to get. Full and transparent information about what the course involves and what the requirements are, and if the parent and the student. Are willing to engage in that material, then they move forward with the course, if they're not willing to engage in the material, then they withdraw. It it seems to me it it very much acknowledges the parents. And students' role in their education, which is great, I'm a hundred percent supportive of that, especially in the K through twelve level. And and at the same time, then we're we're not trying to dictate. What textbook or what novel a university teacher uses, seems like a great compromise to me.
Right, and I understand that, and I I'm throwing out the extreme because I feel like this is why we end up with laws, it's usually the extremes. Where you start getting the lawsuits, and if we did have an art class that decides that they want to have, you know. Somebody come in and and pose nude for artwork. And we know that that's on their class and we're not going to cancel it. At least, you know, for a year and the teacher or the student's parents are aware of what's going on. As a board member, I'm so not okay with that.
So, so you mean that even though they were told in advance that they're going to be painting nudes?
Yeah, that, yeah, this is our school district, I I would be so uncomfortable with that even being an option. In the school district and not having. I guess the option to pull the course, knowing. What was going to be in it and to be able to say, absolutely not, we'll just go without the course.
I think that's a fair point, Amy, let me ask Cory, Cory, typically, how how soon before? The start of the trimester are teachers submitting their syllabi to the universities for approval?
So generally, they're, they're submitting, it's generally after they've met with their mentor uh, at the college. But they have to submit their syllabus, so most of them are meeting with them in June and July.
For the entire year.
Yeah, getting ready to offer for the next, the coming. School year, once they're approved, so it depends on when they're approved, whether it's, whether it's. I mean, it depends on the college, some of the colleges are really good, they turn, do a turn, a quick turnaround and. And were able to do it back in April, but a lot of colleges, it's May, June, that they get that approval and they're meeting with their mentor at that time and then. And so in order to get those curriculum materials ready by August. I mean, we're.
Yeah.
We don't have enough time to do a lot of that, so.
Yeah, so I do think that that could be um, a a good way to address those concerns, Amy, is simply. Uh, in the dual credit policy, which is not the same as this one, but it's Jason also has it here. Uh, we could simply include the expectation that teachers need to have their syllabi, their syllabus for dual credit classes approved. Uh, just like these ones are, so by the principal and then by the instruction learning team, and so if we do see either novels in there. Or um, other textbook materials we have concerns about or content such as um, nude art. Or a religious example, then we can communicate through the teacher that we are not going to approve uh, that as a course at our level, they won't be able to offer it, so.
Yeah, I think I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would too, that makes a hundred, hundred percent sense to me that we.
Yeah.
We retain control over whether we're offering classes in our school district, that's hundred percent appropriate. But once we decide to offer it. We don't tell teachers.
Then we're, then we're acknowledging, yeah, yeah, and I think your other point on the site. Go ahead, Amy.
Well, I was just going to say, even if we're already offering it, but we have a. A different teacher come in that maybe is going to teach it next year that has been teaching it for the past five years or whatever. And they have a new curriculum, I still think that undergoes the same. You know, scrutiny.
Yeah.
Like you just mentioned, Scott, so that way.
Yeah.
You know, we can look and say, oh, well, we've been offering this class for the past five years, but guess what, we're not doing it now, we're going to pull it.
Well, and really, I'd say we just put in the expectation that if the syllabus changes, then they would require that same review of um, a process, and I think that's. Wise, I I do think we're still going to have to have some pretty challenging discussions, I mean, I could, I could certainly see the roundhouse coming back as a novel that's included. Uh, in this particular course, and then ultimately. With this action, we're going to have to decide whether or not we offer that course, if we're comfortable offering the course with that novel in it or if we're not, so. Um, and I I do think Amy, their religious uh, point you brought up, I think is a great one, and I'm going to ask Jason to reach back out to. ISBA with that, because it's almost that same logic, right, is there are specific statutes that uh. Forbid public schools from including that, but if they take the same, I guess, legal reasoning, that that only applies on the K twelve side of things, not to the university side of things. I don't, I don't know how it's any different, so I think that's a great counterpoint that their attorneys may not have considered, I think it's worth at least. Uh, pushing back a little bit and getting, seeing what their response is to. uh, pushing back a little bit and getting, seeing what their response is to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went, I went back to the, uh, Quinn's email to, so I could start that response already because that was the question I had is, is I mean, if the university said that, what do we have any, any say? Right now, you're telling us no. But I mean, to me, that contradicts just like the other two that they said, you know, it's, it's only K twelve, so I think that's great.
Yeah, as long as we have that option to just pull the class and even if it's last minute
Yeah.
right before school starts, I mean, I, I feel like we should have that as an option if we're uncomfortable with the content of the course.
I hundred percent agree.
Well, that
That is, we, we, that is our inherent responsibility is to decide what classes we're offering. And we, we can't, I don't think we can delegate that even if we wanted to. It's indeligible.
Yes.
That's, I guess, all I was getting at, so I don't, I don't know how to help you with your words or just maybe what Greg said, because I think mine goes under maybe a different policy.
Yeah, I, yeah, and again, Jason has that. We'll take a look at that and, and to me, we've got the clarity and the direction we need from the board unless anybody has any other thoughts on it. So I feel like that's a very reasonable solution to the problem.
And Scott, if I could just emphasize, in the four or five years that we've been doing dual credit, this is a pretty unique situation that's come up this past year. Um, for the most part, our teachers have been willing to work with us. I don't think they weren't willing to work with us in this situation. I think it was just a a number of things that happened that, um, led to this particular book being our novel, being used in the class for a variety of different reasons. Um, but with coaching and supportive principles and expectations and some incentives to the teachers to be able to offer and teach these classes. Um, I really think that the majority, the overwhelming majority of the time, we're going to be able to overcome the challenges that we're facing right now and be able to work through the curriculum that's being taught. Our, our teachers want to teach these classes, not just because they're a financial incentive. But these are upper level awesome students to work with, and they love teaching this type of a class, so I think they will work with us and accommodate. Um, and there may be a few situations every few years that we have to work through. Um, but we can look at the past four or five years and, and recognize that's not normally what happens.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I, I have a lot of confidence that our teachers will use the responsibility that they have very, very appropriately, and in those very rare circumstances where it's abused, we can, we can address it.
Yeah, especially, especially if it's, I mean, like you said, I mean, the teacher knows, hey, I'm the, the nude art, for example, I mean, a teacher's gonna know, and that's gonna have an issue, and they're really pushing for that. To me, that's a, yeah, a conversation.
All right, so Scott, did we finally come to some sort of consensus that you understand, I guess, the board's direction, that I think that wording on number two could be changed a little bit and number four, you're unsure of still?
No, I feel, I feel like, yeah, I mean, we'll need to visit more, um, with Doug about number four and see what his thoughts are on that. Um, I'd like, with you know, flexible, but we'll just have to see, and, and ultimately, we, his answer probably, we won't know until the Zion case is settled at the Supreme Court level, so. And I, I guess I don't even know if that really, I don't know if this helps the situation or not, that we make the kids go out and purchase their own novels that have the inappropriate words in it versus us purchasing them. I don't, I don't know if that really solves anything, so. Uh, but nonetheless, I do feel like we've got the clarification, Jason, do you too? And we'll just take a, a closer look at adding in more verbiage into the, into the dual credit policy.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we'd already started looking at the dual credit, or yeah, the dual credit, or what ours is the advanced opportunities policy. Uh, and, and then the wording within that, uh, we added some of that, so we can, yeah, it, it's definitely doable.
All right, so are we okay to to go on to, um, policies and procedures?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Jason, for the notifications to changes to policy and procedures. I won't list them off. There's three of them, if you wanna get them.
Yep, yep, we have, um, I just lost my Sorry, I just lost my, uh, my screen here. Yeah, the, the notifications that we have are the, um, Idaho State Guide to School Immunization Requirements, the summary of immunization requirements. And then, and what we were updating on these ones is just that, uh, it, it has the most current information from the Department of Health and Welfare, and, uh, that, that's really the changes to those.
So then on the number three, the updated references to policy, was that something different?
Um, that one was different. I'm not sure.
That was according to the ISBA, uh, last policy update. They just have updated the references at the end of the policies. So those are a few that were updated this last week.
Well, those don't require any action by the board.
Yeah, and, and it, yeah, and these were all, um, just procedures. There's no approval needed. It just was the, the notification that these were updated based on Department of Health and Welfare and then also the ISBA.
All right, is there any questions for, for Jason? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, Dr. Willston here, and we're back to you about summer school.
So I have a thirty-three page document. I thought we'd go through it word by word. Box, so we should be out of here by. Um, I, I guess, I hope the board has had a chance to look at this, and I'll just try to give you a higher level summary and then ask, answer any questions you may have, but um, we've had great conversations about the last, uh, two to three weeks about the potential of opening up for summer school this summer. A couple of key reasons to do that. Uh, first of course, are the educational reasons. Uh, we have students with, um, who are special education students that through their individual education plans have designated extended school year as a specific accommodation. And so, um, I mean, if schools are closed, there's no way to meet that, but if there's any potential of trying to um, meet those accommodations, I think it's the right thing for us to do. And then in addition to that, that there's really that legal, um, requirement for us to, to do all we can to provide that. Um, for, you know, for a long time, we've provided an additional summer school for our students who are um, at risk of, um, learning to read, uh, based on their, uh, test scores on idle reading indicator. Uh, we do that through Title One funds, and so uh, knowing that those students have probably continued to struggle and likely struggled even more with the school closure. Uh, trying to create an opportunity to address the needs of our, our kids that uh, really need that extra help and support the most would be the right thing to do, so. I've had lots of great conversation, really appreciate, uh, the collaboration again, um, just like they've done with the, with the food services. And the meals we've been able to deliver, um, during the school closure, but Mike Graham and Heather Plane and Lou, uh, Lou Anaban, all just really working very closely together uh, to talk about what does this mean if we, if we try to open up our schools? And then the, the second part is just this idea that, um, I think trying to do a small test run uh, what it looks like to bring kids back is really in our very best interest. So we have an idea of what does physical distancing look like, um, on a school bus? What does it look like in the cafeteria? What does it look like in the classroom? Just so we've got much better um, knowledge than basically opening up the school year, not having any type of experience with that, so. So those are the reasons, uh, that we felt like it was good to, to develop the plan. Uh, we in, um, spent a couple of weeks doing that, and then last Friday, uh, we invited James Corbett from Eastern Idaho Public Health into our meeting uh, via Zoom, uh, reviewed it with him. Uh, he was just very, very helpful and insightful. Uh, there were a handful of key questions that we really needed clarification from him with. Um, and so he was very helpful with that. Uh, we took that input from him and, and finalized the plan and sent it to Eastern Idaho Public Health, um, over the weekend. And Jerry Rackell, uh, from Eastern Idaho Public Health got back to me today, had just very, very minor, uh, changes. Um, we had, um, our list of, uh, the symptoms associated with the coronavirus was, um, she had a more detailed list than we had had. I think that we've learned a lot about this, and I think our list really went back to uh, what we were thinking about back in March, and she had three or four more symptoms that we needed to include, um, in there, and uh, and then she also, um, shortened the number of days that people would have to be out if they, um, if they had to self-quarantine from fourteen to ten. So those were very minor changes, uh, so. With that, we present that board, or that plan to the board for their approval for us to open up schools on this limited basis for summer school. If there's any key points you want me to go through or talk about, or you had questions about, I'm happy to talk about um, those as well. I think I covered a lot of the key things. Um, as we, in the opening part, as we just talked about what it looks like in the fall, so maybe just a couple of key things to highlight is, again, um, I started off the plan with, um, addressing the minimum reentry criteria. And then, um, have in blue the, oh, let me share, doesn't help if I'm not sharing my screen, does it? All right. So the criteria from the state and then just addressed in blue is, um, ensuring that we have met those um, criteria from the state board as we, um, as we develop the plan, so. So I feel like we've adequately addressed all the things, all the expectations from the state board, and then have the overview of the plan including what physical distancing looks like in there, so any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
I don't have any questions, Scott. I think it's well-written, well-presented. I do appreciate having our board chair on this um, list of you know, people that's involved in creating this.
Well, naturally for approval, I, I don't wanna give the impression that I made Amy go through the whole joy of creating the plan with us, but I did wanna make sure that we had her, um, signature indicating the board had approved it, so. Um, maybe just as one key thing is just that, you know, the physical distancing on the buses, I thought you know, as we'd limit, uh, the number of kids, we're gonna be fine, but it's surprising on a school bus just how hard that is to get uh, physical distancing in there. So I think Mike created a great, uh, plan on what the best we can do. Uh, but even there, um, it's only about three feet worth of, uh, space that we can create between kids.
The summer school only goes through the end of June, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, this was a good trial run.
Yeah.
So Scott, or, um, I know we need a motion on this, so I guess, is there anything more on this, or does the board have any other specific questions? I'm hearing, I'm seeing a no from, I only see Greg and Chad.
I have no.
And Paul, okay, now I see you guys.
Probably maybe just one, oh, sorry, Chad, just one key thing, just probably worth mentioning is uh, we had a great discussion about what happens if a student or staff member is diagnosed with coronavirus. Uh, our original, our original proposal was that we'd close the program. Uh, James Corbett actually felt like that might be a little too, uh, drastic of a measure and thought we could uh, take some other steps, but then as I went back and reread the state board's criteria, that was a director from the state board that is if anybody within the school population is diagnosed, then that school needs to be closed, and so based on that, we would uh, close that site, um, basically for the rest of the, uh, the summer term.
Not just to get it cleaned up?
No, it would be shut down, because at that point, I think there's like a I don't know, minimum of ten days that we would need to wait, and at that point, we've lost most of the summer, but the state board structure was simply to close it down, so that's what we would do.
Chad, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna, I was prepared to move that we accept the plan as submitted, as written.
I would second that motion.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Dance, seconded by Mr. Jenkins to go ahead and, um, accept the summer school reopening as presented. All in favor? Well, I guess, is there any discussion on that? I'm seeing some head shaking on some. I can't, can't see some of you. Greg, I'm not hearing you, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, hopefully this all works out, because we all wanna get back to school, so. And I just wanna thank everybody that worked on this, um. It's a lot of work and a lot of headache to have to try and adjust all the things that we're also used to, so thanks to everybody that spent time on this. I know that they're on the call, and thank you. We appreciate you guys and trying to work through this with us.
Yeah, ton of work from our federal programs staff and our specialized staff as well, but worked through all the complications with those programs. I really appreciate that, Amy. They're anxious for the approval, so they can start working on staffing for it, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I know they're anxious for approval, I, and we're anxious to get our kids back, so I'm glad that we're all good with that. Um. We're gonna go ahead and, and keep moving, I guess, forward with Jason to present on policies for final adoption.
Thanks, Amy. This should go much quicker. The, uh, these, these, um, I'm handling the first two, um, and these are uh, have gone through their second reading. Um, if approved by the board, they would be uh, replace the outdated policies in our manual, and it'll also be placed on the district webpage under the board policies tab. And also the schools and, uh, PTO president and staff and patrons are aware of these documents. The first one is, uh, uh, three zero zero four immunization requirements. And, um, remember on this one, this is, this goes back to the Department of Health and Welfare and the requirements that they have, and it's just updating the policy to fit with those updates from the health and welfare. That's the first one. Do you wanna go through both, or do you wanna do one at a time?
No, we're gonna just, I think it if the board's okay, we really only need one motion for the two that you're gonna present, and also the one for Guy. The one that Guy's gonna present.
Perfect. And the second one is the forty-one sixty-five, uh, parent involvement in Title One schools. And this policy, um, has been revised title code and kind of practice, and some of this came from, if you remember, our discussion a little bit about this policy was from the audit. Um, some of the policies, this is one of the policies that needed, it still had like an old child left behind on it, um, and a couple of other things that just needed to be updated. From the, the Title One audit that we had.
Does the board have any questions for Jason with regards to those two policies for final adoption?
Okay, move that we approve for final adoption, policy thirty zero four immunization requirements. And forty-one sixty-five parental, parent involvement in Title One schools.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Jenkins and seconded by Mr. Calder. Was that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, um. And we really only needed one motion to also include the next one for Guy, but we'll go ahead since it's already been motioned. It, it doesn't matter. So, um, is there any discussion on those before we call for a vote?
I have none.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Guy.
So this, this policy, um, is, is necessary in order for us to be able to pay our federal employees uh, while they are, are working at home, basically, um, policy states that we will treat our employees paid with federal dollars the same as we treat our employees with state dollars. So I haven't had any, any, uh, comments or, or any questions regarding the policy.
I move, we approve the policy.
Okay.
Second.
I move by Mr. Calder, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and motion carried on the last one too, Mary, just so you can have that. Sorry, 'cause I never said it.
I haven't.
Okay, um. Guy, we're gonna turn the time back over to you again, uh, with regards to the budget meetings.
Right, in our last meeting, we were concerned about the time Right, in our last meeting, we were concerned about the timing of the budget hearing and the July meeting because we didn't have our information from the state yet. Uh, the, the budget information has now been posted by the state and we have a webinar with the state department tomorrow to talk about the budgets. Uh, and looking at that, we should be able to meet our regular timelines now, uh, which would be the budget hearing in June, uh, on June
tenth.
Tenth, and then keep the July meeting where it was scheduled on July eighth. So, uh, at this point, I don't believe there would be any reason to change either of those meetings.
Did we already vote to change that at our last meeting?
No, it was just a discussion that we thought we were going to have to, but, uh, at this point, we should be able to meet the, the, uh, current board meeting dates.
So do we really need a motion for that if they're already on the calendar and we're not changing anything?
No.
Okay. Alright, unless there's any discussion from the board? Are we good? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so we're gonna keep on going. Thank you, Guy. Um, I'm actually surprised that that all came through on the timeline that it did. Alright, um, Heath, talking about the reduction in force policy.
Yeah, so in, in light of what's happened over the last several weeks and concerns with budget cuts, um, I think it probably comes as some concern to those who have seen the agenda and see reduction in force um, on the agenda. And so before we get into the reason, um, that I'm requesting for reduction in force, I just want to emphasize um, where the district is with our staffing. Um, we're in a great place. Um, we are in the process or have hired about seventy-five teachers for, um, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Um, we've increased due to growth by about eighteen positions. And so it's a little bit of a unique situation that, um, we're coming tonight to discuss, um, a reduction in force. Um, I've shared with you, um, the reduction in force policy fifty-eight thirty. And I just want to outline a couple of reasons as to why we're talking about this tonight. Um, first, under guidelines, number one, um, it is the board's sole responsibility, um, and authority to uh, determine whether reduction in force, um, is necessary, uh, to meet the needs of the district. And today we're looking at a very particular situation um, that I'm going to ask the board to take an action to, um, implement the reduction in force policy. Um, under item number three, um, the board may choose to implement a RIF through the elimination of an entire program or portions of a program. And the recommendation tonight will be to, um, reduce a program from a full-time program to a part-time program. And it's based on, um, item number two. Um, the, the, the reason for it is because of a decrease in student enrollment and class loads for this particular program. Uh, Principal Miller at Hillcrest High School, we've visited extensively over the last, uh, three or four weeks in looking at a master schedule for next year and have identified an ongoing concern, um, with the French Italian program, um, within that school. This program, um, has struggled to maintain, um, the uh, interest from students, um, to, uh, be a full-time program. Um, currently this year, um, there were a hundred and fifty total students who enrolled in French or Italian um, within this program at Hillcrest High School. A typical core, or, excuse me, a typical student load for a, uh, high school teacher uh, would be somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty people or students per trimester. And so closer to that three hundred and fifty range throughout the course of the year. Um, this year, Principal Miller worked with Sand Creek to try to increase interest in this program. Um, they reached out to eighth graders, um, throughout the year. They had eighty eighth graders come over to help fill that schedule to try to increase interest in students participating in French and Italian. And unfortunately, it just hasn't rolled into a situation where, um, we are able to continue to offer a full-time program of French and, and Italian at Hillcrest High School. And so based on these reasons, uh, Principal Miller would like to, um, reduce this position from a full-time position to a part-time position. At this time, we're not sure exactly what that will look like, um, somewhere between a point five and probably a point seven. As we've continued to discuss this, um, Scott has visited with the teacher. Um, the, there, there's only one teacher in the district who has this program, um, and it because of the particular certification, there's no other options to assign this teacher other courses. That's all she's certified to teach is French and/or Italian. Um, so he's had extensive conversations. They've worked over the course of the last year to try to increase um, student participation and to, um, no avail, they haven't been able to, to do that. And so they're looking at somewhere between eight and ten sections um, for the French and Italian program next year. A full-time position would be fifteen sections. Um, through ongoing conversations, um, this teacher has, um, had conversations with Mr. Miller that she is considering retirement. Um, she's not ready to make that decision. And so, um, this may not be a situation that we need to go through the RIF process. Um, but, but in the meantime, to be prepared for it, um, I would ask the board tonight, um, based on the enrollment of the French and Italian program at Hillcrest High School, um, that we implement policy fifty-eight thirty. Um, the board authorizing the district to move forward with the procedures for a reduction in force, um, based on, um, decreasing the French and Italian program from full-time to part-time due to a decrease in student enrollment and class loads, um, for this program. Are there any questions from the board?
Well, I guess just clarifying, because I think I heard you say it twice, we're not, you know, letting her go. We're just decreasing the position from full-time to part-time. So students will still have the option to take French or Italian.
Correct.
Assuming she doesn't retire.
Yeah, in, in the case of retirement, um, Principal Miller indicates that he would post for a part-time position because the student enrollment would still be the same. Um, if however, if he was unable to fill that position, um, on a part-time basis, uh, he would work with Bonneville Hillcrest, who both offer a French program uh, to try to place students in French, two, three, and four to continue that opportunity. Um, however, there is not another Italian program in the district and so that would be eliminated if we're not able to fill that position.
I know, that just makes me so sad because I really believe that's one of the main reasons my daughter got her mission called over there. She had taken that Italian class and I really do think they look at that because all the kids in that same class got called, you know, that served missions except for one, with the exception of one student in there got called over to, to Italy. So it's just sad to me to see that program go away, but I, I understand the need, but it's sad.
And, and that's the real challenge with certification with foreign languages. Oftentimes, a foreign language teacher has another content area that they could teach, which makes it very possible. For example, the French teacher at Thunder Ridge is also English certified and so we can fill her schedule with English and then only have a few sections of French. Um, when we get in a situation where it's French and/or Italian only, um, we're really, our hands are tied in what we can assign to them at that point.
Alright, so we would need a motion to implement policy fifty-eight thirty. Is that correct?
Yes.
I assume.
Removed by Mr. Calder.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dance. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none? I'll call for the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries? Dr. Wilson, oh, go ahead, Heath.
Uh, just thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate that too. If you'll let the teacher know how much we appreciate her and that, that's rough.
Absolutely, and I know, I know Scott's been in contact with her. Um, well, what we'll do with this policy is allow her an opportunity to, to work through the retirement option and see if that's the right fit for her. Um, before we follow the procedures to move forward, um, with the reduction in force.
Alright, Keith, thank you. Alright, Dr. Wilston Hume, with regards to the negotiations team.
Thank you. So, um, we've had a great conversation with the leadership from the Bonneville Education Association and have uh, scheduled our first day of negotiations, if I remember correctly, for next Thursday. And I was just visiting with, um, Doug Nelson, the school district attorney, um, about some technical issues with that as far as making it a public meeting in light of the, the situation that we're in. And so just through that conversation, he strongly recommended that the board designate, um, the negotiating team on behalf of the board. So I think there's probably two ways we can make the motion. One is you could simply, uh, delegate that to me. Um, if you so chose and that, and direct me to select the negotiating team, um, or you could designate the, um, I think, I don't know how it's in the board minutes, but my recommendation would be that we use the executive team, which would include Guy Wingsguard as our chief financial officer, Heath Jackson, the executive director of planning and personnel, and Jason Lords as executive director of instruction and learning.
It's just in here to approve appointments for the negotiations team. Is that okay, Scott? Because the appointments for the negotiations team are listed in the board packet of the people that you just mentioned.
Yeah. Just as long as it's clear in the minutes, I think that would be fine, Amy.
Do we have a motion or are there any questions for Scott? You guys need to wake up.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough one. So if anyone wants to jump in on the fun, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I think that's the whole thing, the wording.
Scott, are you, um, feeling pretty okay about going into those negotiations and not just having an attorney do it? Like you actually want to do it?
Uh, we've, I mean, we've done it. I've, I've been on the negotiating team for, I don't know how long. Five or six years at least. Um, yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable and no, I don't, I don't want an attorney, to be honest. Not that I haven't taken attorneys, but, uh, we've, we've got a great collaborative relationship with, uh, the Bonneville Education Association. This is gonna be a year that, um, I, I fundamentally believe it's gonna depend on, uh, trust and collaboration and not on a heavy hand. So.
I move, we appoint the, um, individuals indicated in the board packet for the negotiating team.
I would second that motion.
Alright, it's been moved by Mr. Calder, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. Is there any discussion on that?
I have none.
Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? John Kim, sale of some property.
Yes, as you recall, we declared some lots over near, uh, Thunder Ridge High School as surplus. We conducted a public offering and we did receive some interest. Very limited interest. Our best offer was thirty-five thousand for the two lots combined. Uh, after, you know, sending out feelers to a variety of contractors and so on and so forth and still not really getting much traction, I visited with Guy. We decided that it would be appropriate to engage an agent on our behalf. Um, and so we engaged with Manwaring Murdoch, uh, Realtors. And they, uh, put the lots out on the, the market. Uh, we listed them at sixty-five and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we received an offer of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the two lots. Um, we countered back the offer, uh, at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was accepted by the folks interested in those two lots. And, uh, so tonight, we need the board, uh, final approval to go ahead and sell those lots, the two lots for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's quite a difference price-wise. That's pretty good.
Yes, it's amazing what a little marketing can do.
Well, that kind of verifies the worth of a good Realtor.
Yeah, I, you know, we, I, my target was all along was I was hoping we would get, you know, fifty thousand dollars uh, a piece for those lots. So to exceed that, uh, I feel really good about.
That's awesome.
I move to approve the sale of the lots as indicated.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Calder and seconded by Mr. Dance. Any discussion on those? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then looking for, um, upcoming agenda items, not really looking, but wondering if you guys have any. And I have a few things that I have written down. If nobody else has anything first.
Uh, I just have a question maybe for John. We've been looking at some property for the district. I think we have an interested party. But I think we're probably, are we too premature, John, to put it on the agenda for June?
Um, it really, right now is hinging on the appraiser. Uh, and I know they're like crazy busy. He did not give me any promises related to when he would have that finished, although he did say he would, he would get on it, but, uh, we're meeting June tenth, is that correct? The next?
The next meeting is next week and that's one of the things that I feel like we need to change. That needs to be changed to a special meeting as opposed to just a work session.
Well, and, and typically when we're talking purchase of property, we would do that in an executive session. I do think Chad is probably not premature to, uh, you know, meet with the board in an executive session and really discuss the particulars of what, you know, property, uh, we are, uh, taking a hard look at and, uh, you know, just strategize a little bit as to how we want to proceed, uh, as that appraisal comes forward.
Well, I, I would like that because if we have board members or administration that don't like the site for whatever reason or, um, then I think we need to know that upfront before we get too far down the road.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
So that, yeah, we're wanting to make that meeting a special meeting this next Wednesday. So that would work. Well, we wouldn't have to make a motion on that anyway, but the executive session, I guess, is good. We could. When do you guys want to have that executive session? Do you want it before the eleven-thirty meeting or after?
So.
Either way, we're
Are you talking May twentieth, Amy?
Um, yeah, next week.
That might be a little quick, John. I don't, I was thinking maybe the regular board meeting, the regular June board meeting and maybe having an executive session to discuss this property. You might have some more information from, from the
I, I think there's a much better chance that we'll have some information from the appraisal that'll really be meaningful to the board. Uh, uh, I think most of the board is probably aware of at least, uh, the location that we've been discussing. Um, and so I don't know how much light we could shed beyond that without uh, the appraisal in hand.
So do you guys want to wait and do it then, June tenth?
That would be my suggestion, Amy.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, that would work better for me as well. Um, well, maybe that might work better for me, but it doesn't matter as long as there's four of you there. Um, so with the June tenth date, do you guys want to meet early or after? For the executive session?
I would suggest earlier.
Earlier is, would, would work for me better.
What time are you thinking, John? Six, six-thirty?
Um, I don't know that we would need any more than fifteen, twenty minutes unless Scott, you can think of any reasons why we'd want to go farther than that.
Um, not at this time. It, I mean, with no students in the building, our, our reasons for, uh, student executive sessions have dramatically decreased. And I don't anticipate And I don't anticipate anything on the employee side either. If I can think, I guess there could be one potential. It may be safer just for us to schedule it at six, and we can always start later because it's just executive, so.
Okay. So will Mary, is that okay to schedule that at six then, prior on the June tenth meeting?
We should be.
Okay, and changing the work session next week to special meeting?
Just by way of note, I will not be there on. On the work session. That's, I'm scheduled at Thunder Ridge from eight until six that day. To record students walking the stage for their program, so.
Okay. Thanks for doing that, by the way, Paul. Also, Mary, if you don't have it already down, but just to schedule us a field trip after May sixteenth sometime for Black Canyon.
I'll get hold of John and discuss it with him.
And the thing that Paul just brought up with regards to filming the students at Thunder Ridge. So I guess a question for the board members, they're wondering if we would like to be there. To kind of give those kids the diploma in the filming that Paul's going to be doing. They're going to be showing that at their graduation, so they're just coming in. I think it was a Tuesday, Wednesday, Doug's on sometime in May. And they're gonna let the board pick hours, and you could come and just, the kids that are coming in in a certain timeframe. You could just hand them a diploma and Paul's gonna be filming it, and they wanted pictures for a bell photography. You know, the other option is that, and I don't know if it's in board policy, Scott, that's something I was gonna ask you. Are we the ones that, what what is board policy? Do we have to be the ones to give them those diplomas? Are we okay saying Doug can do that and get his picture with all those kids? I mean, what?
Yeah, there's, there's nothing in board policy that says who has to hand the kid the diplomas. That's just longstanding tradition. So it'd be perfectly fine for the administration to do that.
So, and I know Scott Lynch has a graduate this year, and I didn't know how important it was for you, Scott, to be able to be the one to hand your daughter that. Diploma and have that on film and have a picture with her. With bell photography. I mean, I don't want to take that away from you, so if it's something you want, I think by all means, you need to go do that.
Yeah, I probably need to discuss that with her, but that was kind of one of the things that she was looking forward to, you know, a lot of these graduates. But I think, I think she would lean more towards that, so that would be cool if we could. If that could be arranged, I don't know.
So my question, I guess, and Doug, feel free to hop on, you're on, you're not muted. Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
We'd be happy to do it. They're gonna be two long days. And I know just giving up a big chunk of your time on a long weekday is is a lot to ask. We fully support the board if you desire to be there and to participate in that activity. If not, we will have it covered and we'd be happy to. We're not gonna have any contact with them or shake hands. We're just gonna give them a diploma, get a picture taken, share in the diploma. And then afterwards, we'll wipe down the diplomas and sanitize them. Having them come in small groups. And so if if all of you are okay with us doing that, we can certainly do that as administration. And and Mr. Lynch could come when his daughter comes and participate with his daughter during that time. And we we would have no issues with that, all the way to school board members scheduling you a couple hours at a time. Come in and participate according to the schedule, however it works for you.
I I just wanted a consensus from the board. Do you guys? And this doesn't, I guess, include Scott Lynch, because you're welcome to go, because it's your daughter. You can go no matter what the board decides. So I feel like you're off the hook. You can go no matter what is the decision, whatever the decision is tonight. But does the board want to go and? And hand out those diplomas at those times on those weekdays and take a couple hour shifts? On a Tuesday, Wednesday, or does the board? Are we okay with letting Doug and his administrative team go ahead and be the ones that do that? I just wanted a consensus.
I'm I'm fine with the administration doing that.
I I have a grandson graduating from Thunder Ridge, but I'm okay with the the administration doing it as well. If you'll just give him a high five for me, Doug.
You bet. Plastic gloves.
I guess you can't even do a high five, maybe elbows.
Yeah, here we go, elbows.
And Paul, you're gonna be the one filming.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, so and I think by all means, Chad, just go out there and give your grandson his diploma.
You know, if I can arrange it and I know when he'll be through, I'd like to.
So, okay, Doug, I think the consensus is, is you guys can take it. And. Be filmed and get all the pictures and the kids know you guys better than they know us.
Yeah, that sounds good. We'd be happy to take on that responsibility. And then next year, we can, we can revert back to tradition or we can change and adjust however we are directed by the board. Phil, like, we don't hardly know the kids anymore, because we haven't seen them for so long, but we'll be reacclimated and that'll be great.
Yeah, I know, it's really sad. Okay, so I guess. The only two that we really need to worry about are just Scott and Chad getting out there for their their folks, so. All right, is there anything else that people want for agenda items?
I do have another point of inquiry, that's all right. These graduations are being held in parking lots or at the drive-in. They're going to have space limitations. Does the board or should the board go to those or try to take away? Spots that parents would typically occupy.
My opinion. Is that we should not take spots that are needed by parents, family. Paul, I mean, that's my feeling. I I don't want to be, I don't want to take somebody's spot to.
I think it's far more important that family, you know, if they can put in another car with family members. I think that's far more important than the board being there.
I agree with that.
And I think when we had the, all of the principals on the other week. They kind of told us what their expectations were a little bit for all the graduations. I know Lyndon Oswald wanted me to attend the technical careers in person. Bonneville Online didn't, from what I understood, because they're up in Rexburg. Corey, feel free to hop on if I'm wrong.
Yeah, if we can just get your speech recorded, then we'll, then we'll just play it as part of our our graduation. And and really, we're not gonna have any contact with the kids, other than handing them a bag and a diploma on the way out.
Yeah, and Greg was invited by Hillcrest. To be there, but aside from that, that what I understood is that we were just gonna be on the camera, like film. That sounds good. All right, anything else? Or Paul, did you get your question answered?
I did, actually, it was more of a comment than a question.
Okay.
It was rhetorical, I suppose.
All right, we would need a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
What a surprise, it's been motioned by Mr. Calder. It's a fight, who is it? Dance?
No, give it to Chad.
I heard Chad first, we'll give it to Chad. Okay, moved by Mr. Calder, seconded by Mr. Dance, all in favor? Motion carries, meetings adjourned.